All right, so Jessica and Karen are both out of town, but Dave should be online. Can you hear us okay?
Loud and clear.
I think I heard something. Can you say it again so we can hear you?
Yep, I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions on the agenda tonight? Any notes for me, Tanny?
One very brief update. I did leave at each of your places. Staff has prepared a new administrative document, directive. So we often get questions from staff around political activity at facilities. And so the city attorney's office had worked pretty closely with parks. And so we've actually just memorialized some of that guidance for clearer direction to staff as they encounter some of that. The second thing that that directive does is memorializes some just standing practice in terms of when we have representatives of other governments. We generally don't charge the public rate for rentals of facilities. We charge a nonprofit rate for those things. And this administrative directive just really records both of those things for staff guidance going forward. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Essentially no change in either of those things, but again, just good guidance going forward. Also do just want to acknowledge and recognize a milestone. So tonight is your last planning session as a seated body. And so we do have a longer agenda tonight. There were a number of things that we needed to get wrapped up. We'll try to move through most of these items. There's only a few items on the agenda where we actually need direction or action. So others are really just procedural checkpoints.
Anything else? That's it. Any questions from the council on that? Tanny?
We did receive another notice about the sale of a mobile home park, and I sent you an email on that today. And if council has questions on that statute or that process, I'm happy to try and answer those.
Thank you. All right, let's jump into briefings, E470.
I believe this presentation came with the request of council member Unryne. So we'll give the floor to our partners at E470.
Good evening. So introduce myself. I'm Joe Donahue. I'm the executive director for the E470 Public Highway Authority. And I've been in this role for about a year and a half, but I have a pretty lengthy experience with E470. I actually served as their CFO from 2000 to 2012. And then I was accorded to join private sector. And I was a consultant for toll roads around the country for 12 years and then came back a couple of years ago when they had a turnover at leadership. And I served as interim CFO for about eight months. And then I was selected by the board of directors to serve as the executive director. And that's the position I've been in since last year. So, let's see. Just want to give just a brief overview of E470. And the goal of this presentation is just to provide just some background to the council and the mayor and the city. Sort of what's happening at E470 and, you know, E470 has been around for a long time, 30 years. And we're really starting to expand up north. Anybody that drives E470 to the airport, you've seen widening activity. And we're actually in a paving project right now up on the north end in Thornton, which will wrap here in the next month. But we'll be widening, continuing, starting next year. And eventually we'll be six lanes, I-25 all the way down. But really just, we're sort of reshaping E470 a little bit. And that's why I want to get out in the community and just let our member jurisdictions know what's happening. But just anybody in the community that has some interest. So just want to provide a little background of E470. You know, we're a 47-mile toll road. We've been around for 30 years. Currently, we average about 155,000 drivers a day, which is about 333,000 toll transactions a day. The important thing about E470 is we're a local government-owned enterprise. And so when I say that, we're government-owned, but there's no recourse to the member jurisdictions. We're solely self-funded with tolls and we have debt that we're paying back. But all the decisions are made by the governing body, which is local representatives from each of the jurisdictions. And that's where all the decisions are made. But the biggest thing is E470 was built to serve Colorado in the sort of the eastern part of the metro area. The makeup of the E470 board is we have eight voting members on the board. And it's made up of Adams, Arapahoe, and Douglas Counties. And then working from north to south, we have City of Thornton, Commerce City, Brighton, Aurora, and Parker. Those are the voting members on the board. As you said, that's the, that's the body that makes all the decisions. That board, as you know, is set by your council. It determines each year who you want to represent the city on the board. And Councilman Unryne's been with us now for a few years. We also have several non-voting members. And that's made up of, as you can see here, we've got RTD, Regional Council of Air Quality, Dr. Cog, CDOT, Weld County, Lone Tree, Arvada, Broomfield, City Greeley. And the whole attended the non-voting members is those are members that sit at the table. They, you know, can opine on things that are happening, but they don't have a vote. And it's really made up of jurisdictions or entities that we are in contact with on a regular basis. So CDOT through CTIO and then any city or county that sort of touches the fringes on the end. So Broomfield, City and County of Broomfield, Lone Tree, Greeley, just because it's proximity in Weld County. And of course, CDOT, Dr. Cog, and the others. E470 has been around for a long time. It was actually formed at the request of the governor back in 1988. I believe it was Governor Lamb at the time decided that there was no funding to extend C470, no state funding. So the counties came together and said, we want to form a public highway authority. So the authority started as Adams, Arapahoe, and Douglas Counties. There was legislation passed then. They created, they created an authority. The state passed legislation, the Public Highway Authority Act, and that created the E470 Public Highway Authority. And that's when the rest of the membership filled out with the cities. The purpose of E470, like I said, really was, at that point, they knew there was going to be a lot of growth in the eastern part of the metro area. And they were just seeing forward that, you know, they needed infrastructure and access out there. And of course, the airport was planning to move out there at the time. And for the longest time, E470 was a two-lane highway. And it was really meant to be that way. And I sort of tell the story is it was built as phase one. And phase one was to build the 47 miles. And it actually took four phases to build all 47 miles. But the intent was borrow the funding, the money necessary to build the initial four lanes and the interchanges necessary at the time. And then as traffic built and as development occurred, we'd widen and we'd add additional interchanges as necessary. And that's really been the model we operated under. We've never gone back for additional funding. Since the initial bond funding of the initial construction, all the capital funding that's been done has all been self-funded from toll dollars or surplus dollars. All the money made on E470, their services debt pays for the operation or sits in a capital fund to be reinvested into the facility. And to date, we've probably, in addition to the initial construction, we've reinvested about $2.5 billion into the road in safety, additional capacity, new interchanges, improvements like that. Just a brief timeline, V470, like I said, the authority was really founded in 88. First segment of the road was built in 1991, was five miles from C470 to Parker Road in 2003. That's when really the bulk of it was built, I think, really in like 97, 98. The middle section from Parker Road to 120th Avenue was built. And then in 2003, the last 12 miles was built up I-25. 2009, we went cashless. And now we're sitting here in 2025 and we're about to be, like I said, six lanes by 2030 from the north to the south end. As I said earlier, where does a toll dollar go? 52% of it is long-term capital investment, whether it be technology, safety, infrastructure, just capital renewal of replacement projects for pavement maintenance, things like that. Operations and maintenance, plowing, cutting the grass, operating the customer service center. It's about 20 cents on the dollar and then the other 28 cents goes to pay debt. We still have about $1.2 billion in debt outstanding from that initial funding. And that's, you know, on schedule to be paid off that we have to, we have a $3 billion capital program to complete what was the master plan from the beginning was it would be an eight-lane divided highway. And it would have all the interchanges that were planned initially. You know, the biggest thing with E470 is it's really been critical in the economic development in the eastern part of the metro area. If you've driven south, you know, if you go down to Parker or all the way down to Lone Tree, you can see the development is all the way out to the highway. You get up into southeast Aurora, sort of the Smoky Hill area, lots of development. And we're starting to really see that development push north up to the I-70 corridor. We're seeing a lot of, we have a big data center going up right across from our building. There's a hospital being built out there. Aurora is really expanding east. But the biggest area of growth that we've seen most recently has been north of I-70 up to Penney Boulevard, what area they call Aratropolis. Some Adams County, Aurora, sort of joint partnership, what's going on out there. But lots of logistics types of facilities. I know Southwest Airlines is building a big training center out there. United Airlines is moving their flight training center out there. So that whole area basically from I-70 to Penney Boulevard is really expanding. This is sort of a signal of that. This is an interchange that we built. We started a widening program about four years ago. At the time, there was a new development being built in Aurora called Aurora Highlands. And they requested that we build an interchange where there was not an interchange. In fact, we had a toll plaza there at the time. And so we negotiated a land transaction. We had to build a new maintenance facility. So we relocated our central maintenance facility. And we invested about $65 or $70 million into this interchange. And we built the interchange, widened the road, and now they have access. As part of that program, we also added an interchange at 48th Avenue that wasn't there that serves a development called Windler. And we have made improvements to 56th and 64th Avenue to widen those bridges to allow more capacity to cross over our road to serve that corridor out there. Safety is paramount on E470. We've always taken pride in what we do for safety. We have, we've put cable barrier down the center of our road. You know, many years ago, we determined that, you know, the biggest cause of serious accidents was crossover accidents. So we invested many years ago and started putting that cable barrier. So particularly in the wintertime, you don't get cars crossing over the median and heading into oncoming traffic. But in addition to that, we have a dedicated Colorado State Patrol troop that serves our road along with the jurisdictions. All the city and county law enforcement EMS serve E470 as well. But when it comes to sort of incident command, we work with the state patrol just so there, we don't really run into jurisdictional issues. But we certainly welcome support from any local law enforcement or certainly the EMS, fire, ambulance, all serve E470. We have a 24/7 traffic management center that we can monitor the road. We can see every inch of the road. We actually just installed, we call it advanced traffic management system that really improves that to where that system can actually detect if there's debris on the road and it'll alert somebody in that center. And we can get roadside assistance out there to push that debris off the road or if there's a broke down vehicle. So it's using just the latest technology to really monitor those cameras and see what we have out there. But it allows us to deploy, you know, assistance out there if someone broke down or if there's an accident or if there's debris in the road that could be a hazard. We've also added deer fencing up and down our road, you know, to keep animals from crossing over. We still haven't happened, but we've done studies over the years to really see where the highest incident is, the time of day. They've put, you know, dedicated crossing. I think we have a tunnel at one section where the deer actually go under the road. It's still an issue, but we do everything we can to keep the animals off the road. But that's a huge area. You can see the statistics there on the fatalities 2024 in E470 versus the metro area. You know, we just don't get a lot of serious accidents out there. And when we do, we don't get a lot of fatalities. It does happen, you know, you're still dealing with people driving vehicles. The other piece is, you know, we're really focused on the customer and the community. You know, whether you drive E470 or you don't drive E470, we want to be able to, you know, support these communities. And some of the things we hear from our customers that do drive the road is, you know, really understanding who E470 is, who express toll is. Express toll is merely a transponder. It's the product we use. Customers can put in their car to charge their tolls, but you can also just drive through. So we're trying to simplify those processes. We're simplifying technology. We're expanding our customer service. We're always training our agents. We're putting tools in place to monitor how they interact. But we also want to be able to resolve issues quicker. We're improving technology. You see the advanced traffic management system. We're always trying to better our license plate reading capability. Because, you know, 35% of our traffic, we're looking at those images to identify who's driving the vehicle. But we also are really working on self-service for the customers. We're really building up a better website presence. We're developing a mobile app over the next year. Sort of trying to meet customers where they are. You know, when I, when I came on staff, I asked, you know, why haven't we updated the website? And they said, well, it's what it has what people want. And I looked at the staff and I asked them, well, how do you do business? Do you do business on a website or do you do it on an app? Do you want it to be easier? Do you want it to take 15 clicks to pay a bill? And so I said, we have to look at ourselves just like any customer does when you're ordering something from Amazon or paying a medical bill or a utility bill. It needs to be really easy, secure, and allow people to just get it done without having to stop their day. So we're working on technology improvements there. A lot of partnerships. That's another big motto for me is we want to partner with the jurisdictions that we serve. And in some cases, that's a financial partnership. We actually are, we have an agreement with the City of Thornton at some point to build out the Quebec interchange. I know there's the developer and the city's involved, but, you know, we're teed up and ready to go with that project when all the dust settles and everybody makes the agreement happen. We have the funding and we'll be ready to widen that interchange and expand that, those ramps. But we actually have a project right now with Adams County at Sable Boulevard. That was not an interchange historically. There's an interchange that will be opening next year. If you drive down there, you can see the, the bridge will be set here to widen it. We've got the ramps going in. That was a pretty complicated project because there's a 60-inch water line that serves Aurora that we had to relocate. And so we had to, actually, I think they just hit that date yesterday. We, they had to shut it down so that we could connect that water pipe. So we had to really stage everything so that we hit that date when Aurora was ready to shut that water line down. But, so that'll be better access in the, to Adams County, you know, their, their center out there, but also into Brighton. But as I mentioned, we, we've put traffic signals up all through Aurora at the top of ramps. When the city wasn't prepared, didn't have the funding yet, we've put money into those. We'll put temporary signals up and then when we widen the ramps, when that time comes, we'll put the permanent signals in. And then the agreements typically are, we build it and then the cities take over the maintenance of it. We actually have an agreement also with the City of Thornton right now for Washington Street. The widening of that bridge, we aren't constructing it, but we'll review the plans and make sure that since it's crossing over our road. But then, you know, we'll continue to maintain the bridge underneath. The city maintains the surface and then all the maintenance, snow plowing, things like that. We are also interoperable. And what that means is if you have an express toll transponder, you can drive in Colorado, Kansas, Oklahoma, or Texas, and that transponder will work on those roads. We are working towards interoperability in the country. We'll be connecting to what they call the southeast hub, which is really Florida in that area in red. And then ultimately we'll connect to EZ Pass maybe next year to where you can drive into New Jersey and maybe use your transponder from Colorado and vice versa. Those customers can drive here. We don't need to send them a bill if their transponder's in the car. We'll work it all out on the back end. And ultimately we'll connect to the west. They're a little bit further behind making those agreements. California is a little bit tricky to work with because their privacy laws. In addition, we serve Colorado, all the toll roads in Colorado. We process all the express toll transactions for all the facilities, whether it's the express lanes on I-25 or the US 36 lanes, the mountain lanes. Also Northwest Parkway we process for. And that's a program that's been in place ever since Northwest Parkway was built. They wanted to build the road. They just didn't want to build a system. We had a system that's been in place for 30 years now. The one little caveat is the Northwest Parkway actually processes their own video transactions. So if you don't have a transponder and you drive on Northwest Parkway, you'll get a bill from them. But on any other road in Colorado, you'll get a bill from express toll. This is an area a little bit confusing to customers right now. We're actually working with a, a marketing and branding firm to really clear that up and really message that better. Because express toll, like I said, is a transponder. It's not an entity. It's really just a device, but that's really the trigger, the key that allows you to drive on those other facilities. So we want to make that clear because though it's the express toll transponder, if you drive on I-25 and don't pay your toll, it's, you know, it's the state that's enforcing that. We're just, we're really just a billing service for them. And just for clarity, we do not run their lane violation program. That's run by a completely separate entity. We don't touch that. This, this is just sort of reiterates what I had mentioned. The only red Xs on there are the video billing or the license plate toll stuff that Northwest Parkway does. Otherwise, these eight entities, CTIO manages mostly express lanes and HOV lanes. Plenary is their P3 partner that runs the US 36 lanes. That's why they're on there. But it's, it's a seamless system if you're driving express toll. By the numbers on how these agencies fall out, you know, E470 still processes, you know, 60% of the volume that run through that system come off of E470. CTIO has grown over the last several years as they've expanded their footprint. Plenary will grow a little bit as they grow in Northwest Parkway, just, you know, they're not growing geographically. So they'll, you know, we, we sort of figure that they'll always be about 15%. And then CTIO is going to run around 30 and then we'll make up the rest on E470. And just to wrap, you know, E470 is really a community-led, locally-controlled government business enterprise. And so, and that's really important because the members of this governing body that govern E470 really control what we do. Control where the money goes, controls when we widen, makes those decisions for us. Self-funded, this is not a tax. E470 has never received tax dollars. In fact, we're not even authorized to collect tax. I think initially the legislation allowed it and then we had it taken out at some point. It's economically vital to really the, how eastern metro area is growing. You know, the Adams County area, you know, I've lived in Colorado most of my life, except for the 12 years I lived in Texas when I became a consultant and I've seen it grow. But I, what I'm seeing sort of between I-70 and I-76 is sort of a whole new employment center starting to build. And as I go east and see Bennett starting to really blow up and we're seeing people commute in from east of E470 into Aurora. And we're starting to see the same thing coming down 76. So we're really trying to position infrastructure to support that growth. And just as a side note, we've got some major capital programs coming over the next 10 years. As you said, we're going to widen, but we're also going to be adding major interchanges at I-70 and I-76, which are not full interchanges today. There's, we have to go through an environmental process with that because we're connecting to the state and federal highway system. But those are big investments that will be coming. We'll probably do I-70 first. And then right on the heels of that, we'll be doing I-76. So that's going to really enhance, you know, the customer and the connectivity. And like I said, we're, you know, we're built for growth. Our goal is to provide a level of service C, which means pretty free-flow traffic. There are some times of day where you get a little bit of friction. But we try to be built out when, when the congestion's going to be there and not wait and then plan. So I will admit, we're probably a little bit behind on our widening now from where we stopped at 104th because the volume's just growing. We're seeing anywhere between 6% and 8% growth year over year right now, which is pretty astounding. We, you know, exceeded our pre-COVID projections by 2023. And so, which is really an anomaly in the country, but that just says to the growth that's really happening out there east. And the other thing is we're seeing our truck traffic grow quite a bit. So we're really trying to build the facility and have it in a way to where maybe we could even shift some of that truck traffic and create some no, no truck lanes if we can. But we really can't do that until we get at least three lanes and maybe leave the left lane and not allow commercial trucks out there because it really slows traffic down. So, but that's, that's my story. I did have put something up there for you guys, just a bunch of statistics. It's got Shelby's contact information. Who's not here, she's over at Public Affairs, but there's my contact information. And I'll field any questions if anybody has any questions.
Questions from council?
Just thank you for coming in. This is actually a very helpful presentation. I appreciate it because to learn all about E470, you know, Tony's our representative. Just get to hear snippets, but it's good to see the big picture.
Yeah, yeah, we welcome anytime. I know we were actually doing this with another jurisdiction. If, if this body ever wanted to come out and see what we do, how we operate, you know, we, we would welcome up a tour if you guys ever want to do it either individually or the body wanted to come out. We could facilitate that type of stuff. You can see even more what we're doing.
Anything to add, Tony?
Jessica, we do talk about the tolls and it's been a long time since we had a toll increase. And the objective with 470 in the beginning was to see how we could lower the tolls. And that kind of came to a stop when inflation and the cost of construction, but we've not raised that. Tolls have been consistent.
That's a really good point. I think across the country, tolls have gone up probably 20 to 30%. And we have stayed flat for the last eight years. In fact, there was actually a slight reduction. I think the long-term financial plan would be to make this road as affordable as we can for everybody. And so we don't do a lot of special programs for low income, but we do want to make it affordable. We've leveled our debt payment. It's about $110 million a year. We'd like to make that lower. And so we're really, as we look sort of the next chapter of E470, which I call the next 25 years, is how do we potentially really do a reduction in tolls and make this a little bit more accessible? For the time being, you know, we keep the tolls flat. We don't want to raise them. Because everything else in your life is becoming more expensive. We sort of feel like we're giving you a discount, but it certainly doesn't feel like it if you're paying the same amount. So that is definitely something on our radar screen and the board definitely would like that as well. But we have to also be able to make sure that we don't cut our, you know, cut our foot off trying to win the race and not be able to expand and just create a bad experience. Because really the customer experience is the most important thing. And that's not just on the phone call with the customer service agent. It's when you get on the road and it's smooth and not congested. And you can get really dependable from point A to point B. And that's really our goal. But that's a very good point.
Just one other point, the agreement and more putting in with the convenience and with Apple Green. And it gives a little, just quick explanation on that.
Yeah, so when we went cashless in 2010, we had toll plazas that we didn't need. And it took a long time. In 2019, they signed an agreement with a company called Apple Green. They're an Irish company that actually develops these convenience stores. And so we actually have four convenience stores being built right now. One is on the south end of the road down in Parker. And it really is only going to serve the southbound traffic. There'll be one up in Aurora, about Quincy. It'll be northbound and then one just north of Penney Boulevard where that old toll plaza was. It'll be one in each direction. And there'll be full convenience stores, gas, EV charging. There'll be multiple restaurants and convenience stores in there. And those are targeted to be open by next year. So if you're driving on E470, you get there just north of Penney between 88 to 96 where that plaza used to be. The building's gone, the canopy's coming out, and they'll be putting buildings up on both sides of the road. That's going to serve your area. And then the old Toll Plaza E, which is the one up near Quebec, that company actually has the first right of refusal. If they decide they want to expand, they could convert that one as well. So we're just really eager to get that done because that agreement was signed in 2019. And it took us till this year to get it all ironed out. But inflation had a big part in that, really affecting their models and the cost to construct. And, but we're really excited that that's actually happening and it's not even just sort of a myth. Staffs, you know, we talked about it for so many years and staff sort of thought, yeah, we're going to hear about Apple Green again. And now those toll plazas are gone and they're building it there. So it's been a long time coming. Yeah, that'll be a nice convenience for customers as well.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I think I was on the board in between your two stints, like I was on in 2015, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, I left in 2012.
Yep.
So I did.
I think I've been getting on the first EV chargers.
Okay.
A lot of changes since then.
Expand that. We've added some older maintenance facility, but we're thinking about even adding more at the facility down there. Very popular.
Well, thank you very much for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, State of the City Event Research.
So I'm going to invite the communication scene. This is closing the loop. I think earlier this year, we got a request to look at options for State of the Cities. We're going to move through really quickly in your backup. You saw some research about, we looked across the metro, what other cities are doing. These slides include some of that research, but ultimately just looking for feedback and direction in terms of next steps about a City of Thornton, State of the City. So.
All right.
Then what about?
Mayor and council, Todd Barnes, Communications Director.
Mayor and council, Todd Barnes, Communications Director. Here with me tonight is Lisa Wilson, the Deputy Communications Director, who did a lot of this research for us. And thank you for teeing it up so nicely. Here are the communities that we took a look at. Arvada, Aurora, Brighton, Broomfield, Fort Collins, Lakewood, Westminster. Just to see what they did with their State of the City presentations. And we want to bring you some of the findings with the, some of the key factors we looked at were where they had it, what kind of partnerships and just the different offerings that each one had. I'm gonna, I will run the clicker. Is that all right?
Guy always has to hold the clicker.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we'll start with Arvada. It was a chamber-hosted, ticketed breakfast event. It was at the Arvada Performing Arts Center in one of the ballrooms. It ran about fifty minutes. They had PowerPoint visuals to kind of highlight the mayor's speech. They included statistics, statistics, excuse me, success stories and they touched on infrastructure, police and fire, economic development, parks, open space and community engagement. So it was a pretty traditional State of the City address. Okay, we can move on to Aurora. Aurora started with a, it was a Rotary Club event. It was in a city facility. Started with a two-minute video of city highlights and then it was forty-five minutes of Mayor Mike Kaufman on stage. So pretty, again, a pretty traditional presentation. He talked about police, fire, public safety, economic development, housing and homelessness and improving relationships with the city of Denver. Okay, let's move on to Brighton. Brighton, Brighton is one, most of the cities took a very traditional approach. Brighton was, took a, kind of they elevated their approach and it was, it was to, to great effect, I thought. So it was at the Armory Performing Arts Center. It was a chamber-sponsored lunch. Mayor, the mayor kind of acted as the emcee, so he did introductions. The city manager also spoke and the Chamber of Commerce President. So that after the introductions by the mayor, the Chamber of Commerce President spoke for three minutes on the State of the Chamber. The mayor then introduced the city manager who spoke for eleven minutes on past city achievements. The mayor went back to the podium and he introduced a two-minute video on recruiting new employees and what it's like to work at the city. Then he had a twenty-minute speech and he touched on budget, parks and recreation, housing, homelessness, infrastructure, police, fire and economic development. And they finished with a three-minute video about city accomplishments and programs. But having all those different voices and like different segments, I think it, it held people's attention and got the finer points across. Broomfields was also very traditional. It was held at the Broomfield Auditorium. It was billed as a community event because there was Q and A and networking afterwards. So that it was an introduction by the city manager and then a forty-minute speech by the mayor and it focused on looking forward, strengthen community partners, economic development and water conservation. And again, Q and A after with the audience and networking where people also could meet department heads and staff. So pretty traditional. Fort Collins, they went above and beyond. This was my favorite. So Fort Collins, they, it was at the Lincoln Performing Art, Performing Arts Center. They also billed it as a community meeting, but this really had a community meeting feel. First, they had the Fort Collins Musicians Association perform for a little bit. So they had music. So that was nice. And then the mayor and city manager were both on stage at a table. It was very casual. This is the communications director kind of introducing everyone. It was very casual, almost podcast style. They talked about issues for an hour and they went back and forth. So having that those different voices and that interaction, I think it, it was more connected with the audience. They also used videos to highlight, Kristen, can you go for just a little bit? Just because I want them to see the. So they also had videos, a lot of videos to highlight the topics that they addressed and those were, it's okay, community connections. So yeah, again, mayor and city manager just kind of having a conversation at a table on, on stage. So, but it really worked. They talked about community connections, transportation, fire, police. They also had full screens with fast facts. So they talked about department accomplishments and successes. And then afterwards, they had what they called social time and it was food and a cash bar. And again, they had it kind of set up like we have our community meetings with staff. So people could go and chat with them and then also talk with the elected officials. Okay. Lakewood, Lakewood has not had an event since twenty eighteen. It was previously held at a hotel as a luncheon and it was live streamed to YouTube and they're, and recorded to post on their channel eight. They said they discontinued it due to lack of interest. And Lakewood's new mayor is considering bringing it back, but undecided on that. Westminster, also a ticketed luncheon at the Doubletree, chamber-sponsored and it was messaging from the mayor and city manager. And there was some key officials there who also provided some updates and then they also had networking and engagement opportunities. Just really quickly, North Glenn was not on the list, but I looked at them anyway because they did a outside July twentieth event on their festival lawn. The mayor gave her speech. There was a slideshow about city happenings, opportunities to chat with elected officials. There was a barbecue and beverages available for purchase with proceeds benefiting local nonprofits. And it concluded with a drone show. So they also did kind of a big community event. And there's seemed to have been fun and festive as well. So anyway, I will turn it over to Todd for key trends, takeaways and options to consider.
Okay, we tried to summarize that information down into a few graphic here with public engagement, a balanced approach and business centric. So you can see which communities kind of took, some of them were in multiple. As you'll see, Brighton and Fort Collins were in public engagement and balanced. Arvada and Aurora a little bit more business-centric. There we go. And then we put this graph in your packet too, so you could kind of see some, the summary and what each one offered. I won't go into a lot of detail in that, but that's how we summarize the information for you. And then wow, there we go. So here are the options that we typed up here. A, to have an event co-sponsored with the Chamber of Commerce. You can collaborate on the program design, shared financial costs. City organized event, city planned and organized, and that would just be something we pulled off with staff here. And the last option is to, of course, not do one. It seems like there's some flexibility here on program design for either one of the option, primary options. And then we're happy to answer any questions.
Just to clarify, we have confirmed that the chamber is interested in partnering, should the city work with the chamber.
Yeah.
Hang on, Roberta and then Chris.
I was just wondering, like for ticketed events, how much they typically charge?
They did charge.
They just had to make it.
Yeah, so that it wasn't just anybody could walk in. You, you reserved a ticket, put in information. And then that also made sure they didn't go over capacity at the, wherever they were.
I think they take sponsorships. That's how they cover the cost.
Yeah. Okay. So a sponsorship would be the chamber giving us money to pay for it.
It would be the chamber and then they also had lower tier sponsorships and you could buy a table as well. Groups could buy a table.
Chris?
When are we looking at timeframe-wise for our event? Just because I think if we go bigger, obviously we need more planning versus if we do it more like we did last year, then we could do that earlier in the year, which I think we was like February or March last year.
I think the chamber had a potential date in mind, but I don't know what it is.
It was the end of February.
Yeah, the, the chamber has kind of softly held capacity in, in case we wanted to perform, they get a look that we winter. Or at least.
However, you would say that. That seems like most of the cities did do it early in the year around February. Except for North Glenn, which was July.
Roberta?
Did North Glenn, did they have sponsors for that event?
I don't know if they had sponsors. Yeah, I'm sorry.
We, we didn't see it.
You didn't see anything that happened?
No, it was on a city property and they just did it as a, almost like a midsummer big event.
Yeah, I remembered it because I thought it was really cool and it seemed more like something we would do here rather than like a ticketed table type thing. Like it kind of aligns with our typical culture of having like a festival type thing and making it really open to people, but I just was, you know, worrying, wondering about the cost if that was sponsored or not.
Yeah. Justin?
So if we were to, some kind of join project with the chamber, then what would the division of responsibilities be? Who would be getting the sponsors and selling the tickets versus, you know, what are the different roles that we do have for each org?
Yeah, we didn't go down that much re- research on that because we weren't, when we first started, we didn't even know about the date that the chamber was interested in. I think that would be just something we would have to coordinate with them.
Okay. And have you looked at potential locations or discussed that with the chamber if there was interest?
Yeah, the chamber does have a potential location and it's escaping.
I think it's a hotel.
What's that?
I think it's one of the hotels.
Yeah, I think it was a hotel.
Okay.
They needed event space big enough to host something like that, but I don't remember which hotel it was. So I've actually been to almost all of these that you put on here. I, I didn't go to the Fort Collins one, but the format seemed very similar to the Brighton one. It was the podcast format, sitting on the stage, having a conversation with a few videos thrown in there and it was really nice and it was short, which was even better. Not a forty-minute speech from the mayor.
Yeah.
Which nobody wants to hear the mayor talk that long. So, I mean.
That's a, that's a long speech.
I talked to all of the different mayors about how they do their State of the City and they said that having the city run it is very complicated and cumbersome on time. And whether it was Aurora who does it with the Rotary Club, but they've done that like that forever. And, or that having the chambers, just having an MOU in place that outlines those rules and responsibilities. And I think the city only provided some of the video. And then the chamber did all the other work. They set up the venue, they did the ticketing, they did the sponsorships, they put it all together. So it's really a financial contribution from the cities to the chamber and that to make sure that we don't have to run it, but it still fits the format that we're looking for because essentially we would be the primary sponsor.
So I do know that the chamber was hoping to get some decision or.
I think they need to confirm the, the location and the date like now. So they were asking for some direction now.
If we did go down that route instead of a hotel, is there possibility or I guess we need to forecast how big this event would be, but given we have some of these newer businesses like Chicken and Pickle, just for example, they have a lot of TV screens everywhere. So like when we run the reels or the videos, maybe making it a more casual versus a hotel ballroom or if that's the direction that we want to go, then go that, but I think it would be neat. And if we featured a space, we don't have a lot of them. But maybe the Eagles Nest, there's something like that at main event.
That may not be big enough.
Yeah, then I, that's what I'm trying to figure out, like how big of an event.
I think they'd be, I think what they want is to a partnership and that's the direction that we would have to give tonight to say, yes, we want to partner with the, the chamber. And then they would be open to what that might look like, but I do know they need to get a date and a venue quickly. So that may be something that grows over time too.
That's what I was trying to visualize this event before we say like, all right, yeah, let's partner with the chamber and use, you know, what is the space and what is the goal? What is the capacity of like what we're trying to do? Because this is so much different than what we did last year, which was, you know,
A video?
A video. We were all at our house. Those are my basement. So.
Well, the year before, they, the chamber did like a baby one at the hotel on one hundred and forty-fourth and nine twenty-five where Johnny's is. And it was a, a sit-down lunch. It was really just a luncheon where they brought sponsors in and it wasn't a true State of the City, but I did give like a quick, I think it was five or 10 minutes overview to the business community of what we were doing as a city. So it'd probably be similar to that for the first year until it could grow from there. Justin and then Roberta.
Yeah, I, I'd like to do a State of the City event and I want to also help chamber grow. So I think it would be good to, to go down that path and then evaluate, see if if that worked out well. I think we tried to do it all on our own. It would be burdened to our staff. It could be, we could do it. I'm sure we could, we could, but it would take more planning and I think it's a double, double benefits if we can help support the chamber as well, which I think is in the best, you know, best interest of the city to have a strong Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of having a State of the City. I guess my first initial thoughts are I really liked North Glenn's format because I just feel like I want folks in our city to be comfortable and make it accessible and I, I just feel like hotels can sometimes feel like they're not accessible to just average people. So that's kind of my first thought. I know that like if it's in February, we can't really have it outside. So that's.
You can't guarantee we could have it outside, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah. I just don't know. I mean, I guess we don't really have any other facilities in the city that are large enough that I know of.
We still have our community meetings too and those can evolve too.
Yeah, I mean, like I don't, I, I, I mean, it could be a, the Active Adult Center or something. I don't know. I'm just not, I, I, you know, after being on council for two years, I'm just like not a huge fan of hotels and that whole vibe, you know? I mean, they can be okay, but I just feel like I want to make things accessible to people and I just don't know that that's like the best way is like in a hotel.
I think one of the other challenges is having the audio video components, you know, at a, at a facility to be able to include that in the presentation too.
I, I do think, I, I just interject here kind of on the fly. I think if there's general support to, to partner with the chamber, we can explore again alternatives. Then use both short term and long term and that the other piece that there was interested in including some of these video elements potentially in the program, there probably are ways for us to leverage those and other events. I know Parks and Recreation is evaluating the rhythm reels to try to refine that for next year. So there may be we have, you know, the screens there. And so there's the possibility that once we have some of these kind of highlights of things happening that, that, you know, potentially there's the opportunity to leverage some of those materials in a more celebratory way to a more diverse audience. And so
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that. No, that's helpful because I've brought that up several times, like being on Tashco years ago and stuff is like, we don't have to add stuff. We just need to kind of adjust things for the times and a lot of times I felt like that was not like heard because I was like, well, we don't have to have a whole new event for Pride. We could just replace one of the rhythm and reels with that. You know what I mean? It doesn't have to be a whole new thing and and I guess that's kind of what I'm thinking here too, is like to make it less cumbersome on staff, we could, for example, one of those rhythm and reels or something could be a celebration kind of like the reflection of North Glenn, but we have like really cool screens and renting good audio wouldn't be as expensive even as a hotel. So those are just some, some ideas, you know?
But I think there's different purposes too. You've got, the State of the City is really getting businesses excited to be here and spend money and expand here, whereas a community meeting is to get the community excited to be here. So there are two different purposes. They're both important, but I don't think they're the same thing.
Yeah, I guess what I'm thinking too is like we see kind of in many of these events, the same businesses always showing up. And I know there's a lot more businesses out there than the ones that are continuously showing up. So sometimes it's, it's that too. Sometimes it's it's that too. I just don't know. How we can just expand it a little bit and make it more, just more accessible. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback and I think we can brainstorm. Again, if there's directions to work with the chamber, I think we can. Brainstorm on what that event looks like and how we leverage again the information and materials that come out of that event. Um, because again, if we if we had a a nice video that was played, that that could potentially be used. And multiple different environments and reach multiple different audiences.
And could even highlight the different wards of the city, kind of like what we did with the the logo changes.
Yeah, true.
So is there any objection to partnering with the chamber for this? Do you want to ask him this?
It's it, no, I'm fine with doing it with the chamber. I was just, one thing that I also noticed on here was that it was all um a mayor. So again, just using last year's format, is that something that as a council we have interest in just delegating, sorry? Or all of us, you know, having a more.
Having a piece.
Having a a more active role.
Well, that's where I wonder on the audio side, the video side of it, that may be the opportunity to highlight each of the different wards and the uniqueness of. Council members as well as what's going on there. We did that with the logo change, you know, we had Jessica playing pickleball. I think that actually wanted a word for that video, right? So something similar that you highlight something in the ward and we play the video so that we're all included in it.
Yeah, we could, that's, that would be something easily done, you, highlights from each ward on a video.
That would be really cool. And then, you know, at the event, Mayor can MC or whatever. You know, supporting and all the videos for distribution and all kinds of events.
Alright, it sounds like we have consensus partner with the chamber for this event and figure out how we can support on the video side for that. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Alright, next up is the Thornton Shopping Center.
I'm gonna give this quickly over to Adam Kruger, who will introduce our consultant. Um, uh, we've done a lot of work to develop a vision for the Thornton um shopping center, go through community outreach. I presentation, we did engage a consulting partner to help us understand the market realities. Of uh producing that vision, so he's gonna share some of his evaluations and innovations of, and then he.
Yeah, that was a great intro. He took a couple of my lines, so. Uh, so thanks uh for your time, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Um, I have joined by my squad here. And I'll introduce everybody. You know Chad Howell, redevelopment administrator with the city, you know, like Garrett, planning director, but you probably don't know David Starnes. Who's the owner of Civistruck Strategy and Development, uh, and brought him on to help kind of uh evaluate the site as a whole, as Tanzi mentioned. You know, we want to best position this site uh to achieve the community and council's goals for redevelopment. Uh, and so we're gonna give an update to council on some of the work that's been done. Uh, and then for the for the Thornton Shopping Center, I've been ready to be looking for some direction from you guys and some items moving forward. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chad Howell to run through some of the things that we have that work.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to share some information about what we see as the next steps. In getting the Thornton Shopping Center uh redeveloped. Uh, this evening we'll be looking at the site's reuse visioning history. The results of the uh site evaluation conducted by our friend David with Civistruck. And we're gonna discuss some proactive steps we can take to attract quality redevelopment proposals that also meet. What we perceive as the community needs. The idea is to do everything we can do upfront. To ensure that we put our best foot forward when seeking redevelopment. So in twenty twenty-four, we conducted three community engagement meetings and related activities. With about two hundred participants, but some of them came to all three meetings, so, but it was well attended. Uh, the key finding was that the neighborhood was interested in place making. To include gathering spaces, pedestrian connections, unique retail. They were not interested at all in fast food, gas stations, liquor stores, or affordable housing, that was clear. There was mixed interest expressed for market residential as a part of a mixed use development. So. The next sort of uh way that we stepped up visioning for what could be there was NAAP's Rocky Mountain Real Estate Challenge. Which was conducted over the first half of twenty twenty-five. These are the site plans presented by the finalists. Uh, it's important to note that either of these, while aspirational, either of these scenarios would require rezoning. To accomplish and both proposals found that multifamily housing and significant public financing would be not necessary. In order to achieve the neighborhoods uh public space and local business goals. So that was interesting. Um, so at this point, I'm gonna get ready to hand things over to David. I'd like to reintroduce him to you and let you know that you'll see by these bullet points on here. He has deep experience working on both sides of the municipal and developer exchange. Of major redevelopment projects. He has experience in putting together capital stacks for very difficult revitalization. Uh, projects, so I'm not gonna um speak anymore glowingly about him. I'll let you guys do that later. Um, he'll he'll present the finding of his site evaluation. And if you'd like to do a deep dive, I encourage you to look at the actual report, which is, I think, fifty-one pages long. It's it's, I like it because it's data driven. So I'll turn it over to David now.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, members of council. I should mention my name is David Starnes. I'm the owner of Civistruck, um, based in Border County. So not too far down the street. Um, I've worked on the public and private side uh for many years. Um, public side mostly with the city of Longmont, I ran the city urban authority. And uh redevelopment manager, so the old Twin Peaks Mall redevelopment that you may remember, part of that, so helping structure the deal. Between the developer and the city as part of a public private partnership. So for today, um, in terms of um the Thornton Shopping Center site. Um, one of the things before engaging in a developer solicitation process, one of the key tasks was kind of evaluating the market. For the site and does the market support the vision that the community had kind of outlined as part of the um. Engagement, you know, in twenty twenty-five, along with what um the Rocky Mountain NAAP challenge students have, you know, looked at as well. Um, I think what's really important when I do these studies, um, there's a data piece to this, but there's also a piece of. Engagement with the private sector developers and real estate experts. I think getting real world input. On the market, what they're seeing in the capital um market today in terms of financing, in terms of what the market supports, really helps. Inform what could be done here, um, you know, at a kind of a build out scenario and. Does that or does that not meet what the vision is for the community in terms of commercial and maybe some potential residential? So I had extensive, you know, um, interviews with developers, some of them already doing projects here in Thornton. But, you know, throughout the kind of front range and Denver metro area that are kind of working on unique mixed use development projects. Again, these are projects that um aren't like a typical strip suburban commercial development, but in projects that involve um commercial, retail. Um, restaurants, residential, um, kind of aspirational projects that meet the goals of trying to meet the goals of the communities. Really trying to do a deep dive into what's feasible from a market perspective. Um, just in terms of what's going on in Thornton, you know, this, you know, at Washington and eighty-eight, you know, this area here. Um, you know, it's it's a stable retail market, you know, it's really second and third generation retail spaces there, you know, these aren't brand new retail spaces, so. The rents are lower, um, but the vacancy rate is really tight, you know, two percent or under. That's because I think it just shows pent up demand for that type of. Kind of neighborhood services retail that's at a lower price point relative to say a Starbucks or a Jimmy John's, which has much higher. Um, rents, um, that would be supported. Um, you probably know. Constructing first generation retail space is very difficult in today's capital market environment. It is just really expensive. You know, we're talking four hundred to five hundred of foot hard costs. And because of that, you need rents at a certain level to for a developer to justify, hey, building this, you know. Maybe forty a foot plus triple net rents, you know, triple net rents are like the tenants per rent a share for, uh, you know, insurance, taxes and so forth. So that makes it really difficult to attract kind of unique high quality retailers that aren't a credit tenant like a Starbucks. And so because of that, you know, this is where the public sector can play a unique and valuable role in closing that feasibility gap to to attract. The types of retailers that the community wants and that the city wants. Looks like. So um through this analysis, um, it kind of, one of the things, you know, with the data, with the interview with developers. Um, we put together kind of five kind of alternative development scenarios for your consideration. And what, you know, there's, um, what they are is that they represent different levels of market support. Different levels of square foot of retail development as well as multifamily. And so, you know, for example, um, for scenario A that you see here, this is the typical strip kind of commercial. You know, three thousand square feet of retail, you know, it'll be positioned along Washington and eighty-eight. And behind that, because they say, you know, it's a fifteen acre site, so you can't have fifteen acres of commercial development. It's just not realistic in the market today. As for example, at a floor area ratio of point three, you know, meaning the the amount of square feet. Fifteen acres is, you know, six hundred some thousand square feet or something like that. It's it's very difficult to make that work financially. So that's why we need to introduce or consider having retail, I'm sorry, residential to complement the commercial and to support the commercial. Because, you know, retail needs bodies and having bodies adjacent to the site really helps make projects more financially viable. The other scenario we looked at, what we call a retail node in mixed in residential, uh, mixed income residential village, this is about forty thousand square feet of retail, about three hundred units multifamily. When I talk about mixed income, you know, there's market rate housing, which is traditional market rate, but also it could be housing like for seniors. Or housing for workforce housing that may involve tax credits, you know, in today's um. High housing cost environment in Colorado, you know, these types of residential uses are certainly desirable, there's strong demand for it. And there's a lot of developers out there that are kind of putting together unique capital stack to make these financially viable. So this is one scenario, you know, for your consideration. The third one was um what we call the experiential retail, entertainment and food hall um concept. Um, I think food halls is an interesting concept and, you know, other cities are doing it. I think it provides unique opportunities for um. Incubating, you know, restaurants that could grow into Brooks and Waters um in a community. And it could provide a place, a destination for people to hang out, congregate, kind of create that third spaces, which I think attracts. Um, um, unique developers and unique um um interests. The fourth scenario was um this hybrid town center and this was this um, the scenario that had that most square footage, about seventy thousand square feet. Um, I don't think it's currently supportable right now from the market perspective, but if you gain. The ability to secure an anchor or a mini anchor, this can help eat up that space to kind of make it viable. It could could be a grocer. Could be fitness, it could be some other kind of destination oriented retailer that would support the additional retail there. And the last piece with E uh was what we call Mercado District and Mixed Income Residential. Um, this scenario looked at, I think, celebrating um the area's Hispanic heritage in terms of um retailers that are tailored towards. Uh, the Mercado and there's examples in Tucson, Arizona, some other places that could could be a unique place to attract Hispanic oriented retail. Um, tenants and users. So this was another scenario um that we put forth. I don't know how hard it is for you to read this on on your screen, uh, but you can kind of see here, um, this kind of outlines. Um, each of the scenarios, um, the number of residential units, the commercial square feet, and then kind of looking at how. Each of these scenarios align or don't align with the community vision and also are the markets supportable currently or not? And what that kind of level of public investment is needed to close that feasibility be feasibility gap to make it. Significant enough for a developer to be attracted to the project, to attract debt equity to a project. And if there's too much of feasibility gap, the developer would not move forward. And so you can kind of see the gap, can range from like twelve million for the typical strip commercial up to thirty million for um the hybrid town center, but. There's a return on investment for the public sector that it that in the report that I'll get into a minute, which kind of showcases, there may be a big gap. But the ROI to the public sector um with the additional investment can make it a much more higher ROI than say a typical strip commercial center.
Well, one other, uh, maybe just a quick add on to that, uh, sorry to interrupt David.
Yeah.
Uh, the the low to medium side for C and D, I think it's important to point out, like that's, some of that is is uh the gap. And then some of that is it's not been tested really in the market and so it, you know, it does make it a little bit riskier uh component. So just want to mention that it's not all based on just the financial pieces. There's also kind of new things to come to a market that aren't really there in this area. So that raises the level of of risk, sorry.
So, um, you may have heard this, I'm sure, but we 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 consider the public sector return on investment. It's like, okay, if I'm a municipality. And I want to attract a redevelopment to my site and the developer says I can't build it because there's a huge finance gap and they say, okay, city, how much? Is said willing to participate to close that gap to make the project feasible? So the question for the municipalities is how much do I have to, money do I have to put up front? And what is my return in investment over time for this project because of its generated? Return on investment, I kind of focus on the direct fiscal benefits and that's obviously for Thornton, it'd be property tax and sales tax. You know, sales tax is the big kind of supporter of of the city's general fund in the level of investment needed. And so when you look at this, you know, there's the input of the um, the city investing incentives. And I'll get into this a little bit, you know, there's a wide variety of incentives that aren't directly monetary, but that do help close that gap to make something a project feasible. And this can be through URA and TIF, can be water tap credits, can be property TIF, land concessions and infrastructure investment. All these things. Are really important for the development community to kind of close that feasibility gap. And the outputs, you know, by investing in this stuff upfront, you get the redevelopment project. You get that vision, you get the retail uses, you get that place making opportunity and you get a a blighted sight. That's contaminated, removed and as as an attractive destination. And so the revenue streams, you know, we continue on a on a annual basement and uh on an annual basis. And this includes incremental property tax, it could include sales tax. Um, could include um the base property from the non-TIF, meaning, you know, with the urban ownership, the city, you know, obviously with a TIF. It goes back towards potential bond for public improvement, but the cities and other tax entities re receive an ongoing basis at base level um increment. And then there's the community benefits. There's obviously the direct fiscal benefit to to the city, but there's the really non-quantifiable. Kind of qualitative impact, but which I think are honestly just as important. Again, removing blading conditions of, you know, a vacant um shopping center that the city took on demolished. You don't want that thing to sit vacant forever, so how can the city participate in a redevelopment project to help close that gap? Looks like. So this, you know, there are a lot of details in the report, but just in terms of the ROI, kind of what's highlighted or read there, you can kind of see first uh scenarios, uh C and D. Which we're recommending, I think this really is most aligned to the vision um that the community wants, but it has, you know. The, you know, biggest gap upfront, but the ROI is much greater than the other um um. Scenarios, when you consider the amount of sales tax that would be generated from the project. And this just assumes um one hundred percent of the city investment, so there's other tools that developers can tap into. To close that feasibility gap, it's not just municipal. You know, I I kind of some of those other ones in terms of water tap credits and TIF and a rental, but you can do a metric district. You could do a PIF, I know there's some PIFs in here in Thornton, you you know, the the properties are in the enterprise zone. And I hope maybe with the opportunities there, new two point O, I know it's up to the state to kind of determine where those are based on the kind of census tracts. And I know it's, you know, for discussion, but I think opportunities are a very powerful tool and from the development perspective, you know, in terms of. Really kind of part of the equity stack to help close that gap. So, you kind of heard me already, but in terms of, you know, some of these potential tools from the city city perspective, water tap credits, I understand. The current credit, about three and a half million dollars, that is not insignificant. So that's not something you have to pay for now. It's not cash out of the city's thing, but it's it's a, it's an incredible, you know, high value. That can be used to to lower that gap. Land sales, price concession, I think, you know, there's obviously appraisal that need to be done, so you know, for this analysis, we've. Kind of use, I think, six point eight million land value. Sometimes municipalities will say, okay, I won't, you know. We we can't give it to you for nothing, we can give it for your half. And so this is kind of part of the negotiation with the city, I'm sorry, with the developer to help. Close that gap. Again, it's like it's layered, so layered approach just in levers to determine what makes the most sense from the city perspective. To kind of close that gap and what tools you want to use. I know in some instances, the city does sell stack to share back. You know, it's like a hundred percent of nothing is nothing, but if you invest something, you get, you know, maybe half of that back. So that's another tool that can be used. You have the TIF there, you know, it's gonna sunset in twenty thirty seven. So there's, you know, tips are like twenty-five years, so you have a lot, you don't have a lot of TIF left. seven. So there's, you know, tips are like twenty five years. So you have a lot, you don't have a lot of TIF left. But that could be one additional tool to help again, close that gap. Other wa- ways that the city can use to participate could be undergrounding kind of overhead utilities, which, you know, if you're a developer, you submit application, you know, usually it's the developer has to pay for undergrounding those utilities as part of any type of redevelopment. So this is where the city could step in to help close that. And then development fee waivers, reductions in credits, you know, other municipalities have lots of ways to kind of incentivize projects to to close that gap. But I think the water tap is a big one. I think that's really a valuable tool. And then also ownership and maintenance of public spaces. So I think as part of whatever is redeveloped here, I think the public space is really a critical piece to um kind of destination um aspect of it. And a lot of times developers don't like owning public spaces, you know, there's a maintenance cost to that. And so this could be a scenario where the city could step in and take over ownership and maintenance of that would so it'd be a less of cost developer again, closing that gap. And I mentioned these other tools, metric district, business improvement district is one, uh public improvement fees, opportunity zones, enterprise zones. So um the next piece that um as part of this analysis was looking at the zoning. So I understand the city went through the land development code update. I think it's great. I think it's got some great tools. Um, this site is currently zoned, general, commercial. So obviously the focus is on kind of the commercial aspect, but as I mentioned, fifteen acres of commercial is going to be very hard to work and very hard to find a developer willing to do that. If you can, great. But in in terms of all the conversations that we've had with developers, it kind of get a better sense of market interest, every single one of them said this site also needs residential. It needs medium to high density residential. It just will not work without it. So because of that, you know, we took a little bit deep dive into the um zoning. And as is currently written, you know, I think it needs some targeted um adjustments to the zone to make it easier and predictable to do that mixed use component, which gets is aligned with the um the vision um for the community of a destination kind of place making opportunity. And so um what we're suggesting is what's, you know, planned development overlay zoning. So we had the base zoning of the of general commercial. But you overlay it with this uh PDO and this PDO kind of gives that additional flexibility to the developer to do residential um should they desire and also addresses some some design standards.
Excellent. Uh, one quick add on and we'll talk about it in a bit too, but actually we might talk about here. There's also ability to put restricted uses in there that we've heard that the community doesn't want. So there's things that we can do in a PDO. Uh, where we say, you know, uh, Dave, you're talking a minute about his recommendations, but uh for the for the zoning, but we can also include things that we've heard the community doesn't want and it doesn't fit the vision. Sorry, David.
No, I'm next. Yeah, this is mine. So um uh I'm going to paraphrase this. Mike uh helped us put most of this together, but what is the benefit of a PDO of a planned development overlay? Um, we believe it allows high quality site design that furthers the city's objectives. And and these objectives cannot be achieved through strict application of the current in place development and design standards. So it's an opportunity to leverage true mixed use development while providing flexibility for the developer. And I don't know if you guys wanted to tease that apart anymore, but that's that's my paraphrasing summary of your thought.
No, that's spot on. Why?
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, Mike. Nope. I was saying the PDO overlay was designed for this type of application versus the old PDs that you saw that was for pretty much most applications. It's is to create a unique project and I think there that's the intent of this project.
Yeah. So when I wear my developer hat, what scares me the most when I submit developers' application, submit application for development is the process, the time it takes to get something approved, because time is money. So um we're very much in terms of um to the extent possible, providing a predictable and kind of transparent path is what's really important for a developer to kind of get something approved. Obviously, you know, some developers like to do variances and this, that and whatever, which triggers all kinds of stuff, but to the extent that um this PDO can put in the tools um that allow a developer, you know, to be able to meet this vision through kind of targeted adjustments goes a long way in kind of showcasing um this kind of what I view is as a city as a co-partner. I mean, you're a co-developer in this thing. If you're going to invest money, I think, you know, you would you would want to have a predictable process as well. And so some of the things we, again, these will have to be teased out later, but just kind of my initial thoughts was kind of to greatest extent possible for the uses that you want here, like certain restaurants over five thousand feet. Office if there's demand for over five thousand feet, make it at a permitted by right use. When you, when you do limited uses and special uses, it just it introduces more complexity into that. We're suggesting to get that um higher level of multifamily, I think, under the current base zoning is twenty five percent. We are offering up to thirty percent. But with that, without the ground floor commercial requirement, so I don't know. So okay, I'm going to talk about ground floor commercial requirements. So
This is a thing.
This is a thing. And um I think it's definitely desired and it should be mandated or required on arterials and roads, like on Washington or on a um, you know, eighty eights or whatever, because you want to kind of have an activated street frontage. If you're going to have a sidewalk, you you know, you don't want to have it all boarded up and just be non-activated. So having that, what I'm suggesting is because, you know, how this thing is laid out, most likely the multifamily is going to be on the inside. It's going to be interior. By mandating ground floor commercial on an interior building, it it it's not practical. Because if you're a tenant in there, they're like, there's no visibility. I can't get any thing. So it's, you know, I've seen projects. I mean, you know, where they where a municipality has mandated ground floor commercial and it sat vacant for years. And a lot of developers I talked with, it's a lost loss, meaning it's it's a financial loss to the developer because they have to like subsidize it via something else. And it's a loss to the community because you have a vacant storefront that just sits there for a long time. So I think thinking critically about how this to do this is, hey, let's not mandate ground floor commercial, particularly if it's a a mixed use building that's on interior versus, you know, I can see it on Washington, you know, if if the developer wants to do multifamily in Washington, yeah, make them do ground floor commercial, but it's interior, have the flexibility not to require, I think goes a long way. Then the building height thing. So right now it's like, I think forty five feet without the kind of with 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 the commercial. But if you don't do it, um they may have the opportunity to do a five story building to get maybe three hundred to four hundred units in there. You know, not maintaining ground for a commercial and increasing that building height to, you know, to five stories. I know some some of these values do stories and some do feet, you know, I I'm more, I like stories, because if you want to do twelve, if you want to do like twelve foot um ceilings, but you know, times four plus, you know, maybe the ground floor is like fifteen feet, you're starting to hit close to that sixty five feet or so. So yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Like stories versus feet, but you know, there's some flexibility in in terms of how the definitions can be in the code.
The code does start to feet in the city code, but I am familiar with the stories as well. Yeah, it would be a foot.
Okay.
Based on the code.
Okay. So um in terms of implementation strategies, you know, it kind of outlined in the report. Um, as mentioned, developers like um transparency and predictabilities, predict predictability. I think having the city in, you know, a lot of times developing, if you do an application and developer needs to rezone or do PDO, they'll process that concurrently with their site plan or their plat application. What we're recommending here, I think, to kind of get ahead of it is have a city take the lead initially to do the PDO in advance. And it shows that I think the city, that the municipality is serious about this project and it kind of creates a more transparent pathway for a developer. I think deploying this layered financial toolbox is 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 going to be a requirement, but there's a lot of tools out there and a lot of levers to be pulled. And I think to the greatest extent possible, utilizing some of these other tools, not just the municipal tools, really would help increase the city's ROI over the long term, you know, metro districts, bids, PIFs, and all these things are really important. Another thing is what I call rethinking the developer solicitation process. So I've worked with a lot of cities, municipalities throughout the country on developer solicitations of similar situations where they have fifteen or thirty acres and they want to attract a developer. And some have great success and some don't. I think what's really important is thinking about the CEO Thornton, thinking about this process as a marketer and as a developer. So instead of a typical purchasing, put this thing on bid net, cross your fingers, hope to get some responses, you're not going to attract any good developers that way. It needs to be targeted outreach. I know, you know, the economic department has a great database of developers, you know. We're we engaged in 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 initial outreach. We have some doors, so you know, outreach as well, because it's going to take to be honest, not, it's going to take a, not a formulate developer to respond to this. When I say formulate developers, you have developers that say, I do multifamily development and thirty thousand square feet of commercial. That's all I know. Three story garden style walk ups and pad sites. Or the the city in the URA, I have to think outside the box to kind of position themselves to find those unique developers. And there are some great developers in the Denver region. And they, you know, the developer that had been talking to the city for a long time about the site potentially too. So I think there's some opportunities there to kind of capture that. The other thing is de-risking the site for developers. You guys are already doing this. Took the property, you're doing the cleanup. That's huge. Because, you know, any developer that when there's a contamination, they'll just run a mile away. But taking on that liability and the city, if they're willing to do that, which I think part of the reason they are, that really helps de-risk the site to make it easier um to do something. Another recommendation, what I call the entitlement partner liaison. So as you made, so I think it'd be great, yeah, appoint someone within the city to kind of shepherd this project through the entire entitlement process. You know, you had to work with public works, you have to work with utilities, you have to work with planning, you have to work with referral agencies. Foundry project in Loveland that you might know that was done by Brinkman. That was a public private partnership. They had a dedicated staff person shepherd that thing through. It took, I could not believe this, I can't remember exactly, maybe six months to get that thing approved. Usually it would take years, but they were like there, back and forth, back and forth, making sure the developer, because you know, when 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 you submit applications, it's going to be comments from the city. And it's up to the developer to respond to those comments. So they they were making sure that the developer was being responsive and and trying to address the city's comments in a timely manner. So I think having that liaison, I think goes a long way to kind of show that this is a high priority catalyst for the city. Let's get this thing approved, because if you're investing millions of dollars, like a developer, you don't want to wait years for your return on investment. So get this thing approved as soon as possible. And the last couple here, I think um civic and public uses, open space is going to be such a critical piece to make it attractive, to creating a place where people like to hang out, families like to come. I think these are all really important things to kind of create that catalytic destination kind of place making opportunity. interim uses to activate the site prior to redevelopment. So right now it's being vacant, got some you know, fences up there. It's a nice, you know, it's not looking great. But I think in terms of showcasing, you could do like, I don't know, farmers markets, you could do some pop up things, things that or put some signage out there. If you, you know, eighty eighth, you know, while I'm sorry, watching gets how many hundreds, thousands of drivers a day there? Put some signs up there, like, hey, coming soon or whatever. If you're driving by, you'd be like, oh, what's going on there? So it helps. I think showcase that we're, you know, the cities and the future developer are are trying to do something, kind of would go a long way in kind of creating a buzz. I think creating a buzz really goes a long way in terms of development and investment. Last piece is curating what I call a distinct identity and brand. So I don't know, I mean, I think branding is really important. And as part of this whole developer solicitation process, right now it's called the Thornton Shopping Center redevelopment. I don't know.
Rolls off the top.
Is that, is that, is that what we want to call that thing? I don't know. I mean, I think maybe going through a branding exercise as as you, when you put together the RFQ, have a name for this thing and that kind of creates something kind of unique. So I think that's all I have.
I'm next.
Yes.
This is a lot, isn't it, you guys? But it's good stuff, you know, and and we'll come back to his recommendations and how we're going to um seek your blessing and your input in a second. I just wanted to touch on the process that we've fallen on. We decided to split the developer solicitation process into two phases, RFQ and RFP. The reason we we're doing that is developers complain to us that they don't want to respond to RFPs if they have little chance of getting the project because it costs money and they take time. So if we can do an RFQ phase where the developers just submit their experience to us and we can pick who gets the right to actually submit an RFP and we can pick only the people that have experience doing what we want to get, right? So that's what we're um looking at right now. And then um, once they're pre-qualified and they respond to a formal RFP, there will be a wider array of submission requirements. And we'll bring all those responses back to TDA for direction. And then eventually TDA will help us decide who's the most responsive firm and who we will enter into an exclusive negotiation agreement with, which allows them to do due diligence and so forth before they actually own the property. So a lot of times that's eight months to a year. So um I hate doing timelines.
Sorry, check. Can you go back real quick? One other thing I wanted to address, nope, uh, sorry, back.
It went the wrong way, didn't it? We'll get there.
Uh, there we go. Just uh, so we had, it it's council might be aware of, we are, we are aware of our intermiss success with RFPs in the past. And so we'd already been working on uh more property brochure attractive solicitations, which is just to add on to what David said. Um, emphasizing that point that then that we didn't put it up here, but that is, that is absolutely the look that we'll do where the more of the you know, legal contract stuff is more in the bottom as an appendix, but the the look itself would look a little bit more like you're looking at a property brochure um and really selling the site of the area and the vision for for where we'd be. So I did just want to address that since David mentioned it. We didn't highlight it as much here, but that is something that we've actually absolutely been working on. So that's what we'll see for the RFQ RFP. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, we're back on track. So so this is a timeline. But this is not meant to represent the actual timeline. This is kind of the flow of tasks in the whole solicitation product process, process, leading us up to having the agreement with the developer. And then the arrow going off in time is, you know, the actual development process. So it's complicated and it's time consuming. Um, so, but it is, you know, what it is.
Were you going to jump on to the next one?
Yeah.
Before you do, I just want to highlight a couple of things. I just can't keep it a mosh, I'm excited. One, one thing is um obviously, this is somewhat dependent on the direction we received from council tonight and your guys' thoughts. This is based on kind of the recommendations and the thought that we were moving forward on this, which we'll we'll try to get from you in a minute. The other piece I'll say is for the RFQ piece, if you look at this schedule, the RFQ, we believe, and and this was from input from David as well, that we could start that process before the, if we do the PDO overlay, before that is that is done. Um, to get that process going, get those RFP, I'm sorry, RFQ responses in and evaluations in, so that we have that, the zoning overlay is done. You'll see those kind of time up there uh, at the same time. And then the RFP advertisement comes out after that's in place to provide the the certainty that David had referenced earlier. Because I just wanted to point that out. It it might be kind of hard to read on on that timeline, so I want to make sure you you kind of saw at least the process that we are, we are thinking at this point.
Good. So now for the fun part, uh, we're asking uh for input from council and direction for major areas. And I'll just blast through them real quick and then we can stay here and have a little conversation. The first is, does council slash TDA support the vision on the right about signature place making opportunity? And under that scenario, C and D that David showed us most closely matched the community's vision, but they also require the greatest investment. Uh, the second thing is regards a potential city financial assistance. Do we articulate the financing tools we're willing to employ in the RFQ upfront? Might be a good idea. We don't have to put numbers there, but you know, we can advertise that willingness. And the uh, David mentioned a project ombudsman assigned maybe from city development to actually bird dog this thing. I think that's, that's good. Um, number three, the staff initiated PDO overlay. You know, as we discussed, it corrects, it um creates flexibility, which leverages market demand. And then finally, the proposed solicitation process that we just went through real quick. Are y'all okay with that process? Those are the four main things. And after we have this discussion, we'll talk about next steps. So we'll open it up for.
Will you jump to next steps really quickly? To hear about engagement.
Yeah, that's good.
In the context of what we're recommending.
Yeah, thank you. So um staff recommend that, you know, we host a Staff recommend that, you know, we host another community update meeting to talk about the PDO process criteria and community benefits. We don't want to spring on people because there were, you know, maybe as many as twenty percent of the neighborhood said, no residential of any kind. So I think we need to do this again. We'd be, uh, begin finalizing the RFQ and then begin the actual, um, staff-initiated. PDO process, because as you saw, that takes many weeks to get done. It was the, it was the. Back on here, it was the second bar. So you can see that those are quarters. So it's gonna take two full quarters. You know, half a year at least, maybe a couple of months more. So.
So we wanted to get feedback from council on, I was answering the questions that you have from all the information presented tonight. Uh, and then also wanted to kind of get feedback on those four bullets on the left. To see if there was what your, what your thoughts were, if we were kind of reading, you know, the, the exciting thing about, I think, where we've come is. You know, and part of the reason I think we want to go back to the community is, the community engagement that we did, all that information has been used and to develop. These scenarios. Now you can't get everything that everybody has in here and, and balancing what the community wanted. And, and what I think we think, uh, uh, we've heard from council over the time. With market realities and, and kind of how that comes together is what we've tried to show here. The good news is. Um, and this wasn't a guarantee until we, uh, well, there's no guarantees, but you know. Does this all, does the vision align with market financial realities? And what we could do and the, and the answer is, I think, with the right tools and the right support, it does. And that's a good thing. And the ROI on something like that is higher. Having said that, what we really want to do is, is get your feedback on these different bullets and, uh, and make sure that we're moving in a direction that. Council supports. So I'll stop talking and I'll look for your feedback or questions.
I got Dave first and I heard two buttons, but none of them lit up. Justin or Chris? Okay.
All right, I'm first. Look at that. First from Florida. I am in favor of option C and whatever we need to do to make that start coming into reality. I think that's. To me, the best option and something that would be awesome in that area. So I'm, I'm, would love to see that. And that's all I got.
Uh, first question about the ROI. You know, for each type of project, did that include the investments that we already put into this? We put over about ten million dollars.
No.
So this is ROI just with future investments. Okay. And so I, I bring that up. Because to remind everybody, I mean, we all know the city has already invested over ten million dollars on the site. And those aren't in the ORI. Uh, so it might be helpful to, to do another calculation, including that to get overall. Project ORI. But I do think it's important that we stick to the vision that we have up here because we've already committed such. A large amount of funds from the South Thornton TDA. And also. Uh, we have invested in the community outreach. This is not the vision of the council alone. But it's the vision of the community as well. And so those. C and D scenarios align really well with the vision. And of course, there's the higher risk, but I think that we've. Talked about a number of different ways, actions the city can take to mitigate that risk and make the project more feasible. So I, I think. One, I support the, the recommendation and two, I think we should do everything that we can. All of the options that are available to us in order to make this project. Have the best possible outcome. And, you know, that includes further commitment to. City financial tools and the project ombudsman. And I'd really love to see us, you know, utilize maybe some of the. The changes that are upcoming to compress the timeline as much as we can. You know, while maintaining a. A product that's gonna meet all of these goals. So, yeah, in favor of all of this. And I would just say my, my only ask is to really. Own in on areas that we can be efficient and streamline this for our development partner. And, and market that effort out. So that we get those, those really visionary partners to come in and help us make this happen. Show us that we're committed to it. I think we've already shown that we are. So it, it would only make sense to continue that commitment.
Uh, first and foremost, thank you for all the time. And after you put into this, uh, one of the unique things of being able to be a judge was we spent a full day. In a room full of twenty individuals that had David's and the rest of you guys' expertise. So it's, uh. This is kind of, I don't want to say it's coincidental because it's, it's just doing due diligence, but. Almost everything you put in here was a lot of the feedback that we got back from the Rocky Mountain Challenge. And one of those prevalent things was obviously that we need to have doors on the property to make the project, uh, sustainable. And so, um, I. Appreciate the idea of bringing this back to the community because I do recall a lot of community output was we don't want. Doors on it. Well, without it, nothing gets built. And then that's like Justin just said, ten million of our tax dollars. Uh, spent on a project that was just never come to fruition. Uh, so I am, I'm definitely a proponent of the PDO overlay. Uh, because I know the necessity of that with those doors being there. Uh, option C seems viable to me. Uh, also because we looked at some of the surrounding area and the competitiveness for doing a large anchor. Or even, uh, they threw out ideas like Trader Joe's and things. That doesn't really fit the demographics of that area, but we have Walmart. And other grocery just on the south side there of eighty-eight. So I think that might create some struggles there. So C to me, out of. The two suggested, C and D would be, uh, more desirable, just to kind of fit what we're trying to accomplish there. And, um. Yeah, I would encourage more continued support from the city and whether it's water tap fees and things as well to help get it across the finish line. Cause we're gonna need to make this as attractive as possible and get a, a national presence when we start to market this. So. Uh, I really like the liaison and trying to have somebody handhold or fast track through. That's something that. You know, I've been a pro since I got on council was coming up with fast track systems for unique developments. And this might be our first opportunity where we can then. Way out the benefits and see how we can implement it in other areas around the city too. So, um, I would like to see that go further down and. Yeah, overall, I, I don't really have any objections to the, anything that was stated. And again, it's coincidentally, we spent like eight hours that day. And this presentation stretched out over eight hours. And we got to see a lot of reasoning behind all of these things that were needed. So. I, again, really appreciate you doubling down, you know, here six months later and then bringing back the same findings that. A lot of individuals in the industry came to the same conclusion.
Roberta?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this back to us. Um, I, I wanted to know, like, out of C and D, can you, you go back and explain those again? Because there was some stuff you said that wasn't written in the slide.
Yeah, so. To C, yeah. So C, what we call this experiential retail slash entertainment food hall kind of high-density residential. So this one has sixty thousand square feet of retail. And a component of that is a food hall.
Okay.
Food hall can be twenty to thirty K. So it could, it could even be up to half. So that was kind of, again, experiential retail. In the retail, you know, so I think experiential retail is a great way to drive customers to a site. Cause you know, obviously there's retail sales, but providing opportunities for people to have experience and do things, whether not. I'm calling it, but I'm saying that kind of opportunity to do something, it goes a long way. Um, this one had like three hundred and fifty multi-family units. So that could be a three, four, even five-story building, um, thing. The hybrid town center is kind of more the. More mixed-use environment. So it's much more kind of retail seventy thousand square feet, but more of an anchor. Like it could be a grocery anchor, it could be a fitness anchor. So kind of that versus experiential. So more kind of a, a different type of anchor.
Can you explain experiential though? Just like, like, is there like the example?
Yeah, so, okay. Um, I, I live in Lewisville.
Okay.
And just opened in downtown Lewisville. It's called Birdie Bar. So it's an old gas station.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I saw that.
Old gas station. And there's a little mini putt-putt thing right out front with a bar, um, with a restaurant. And with a, um, um, a simulator. And I swear, my kids, I mean, you know, I've got a middle school and high school kid. It is like the place to be. And so they go and it all hang out and this kind of drives customers and to experience and do something and. And spend time with families. So that's how I kind of, you know, define kind of experiential. It's just creating experiences and, and memories. Versus you going into Walmart or wherever and just buying something and then kind of leaving.
Yeah, I think that's kind of like, I mean, when I just think of the history of myself living in Thornton. In the nineties, it was all big box. Like it was just, you know, the big Kmart, the big bigs, the. Yeah. Walmart. And that's kind of like where we ended on this trajectory of having tons of. Like retail space that was very much like the Thornton Shopping Center. Just, you know, grocery store and that kind of thing and.
Cause the site has to differentiate between all the stuff on twenty-five.
Yeah.
You know, all the power centers, you have the outlets, you have all those which drive traffic, but it's like. How can this site differentiate itself from that? Because that's, I mean, around the site, two million square feet of retail or something like that. I mean, a big number. So that's why, you know, there's obviously. A market reality of how much retail can be supported in this thing. And it can't be the same retail that's on I twenty-five. It's gotta be something different. It's gotta be that place-making and unique and destination. I mean, you, you need to find the right developer. Who has the relationships or the ability to kind of build the type of development or bring this type of tenants. Yeah, as you're doing. Is it called the pickle and?
Chicken and pickle.
Chicken and pickle. I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's. Yeah. So I mean, that's, that's experiential right there. I mean, that's a great.
Okay.
One thing, just to make sure to clarify, and I'm, I'm sure you guys know this, but. You know, these are, these are, uh, scenarios that are developed or developed with the idea of what could be possible on the site. Obviously, these aren't, these aren't exactly what's going to be there. And C and D in particular. Could be, you know, there could be a mix of, of some, something like that. Just, just to make that clear, like, you know, you wouldn't have to say we want C or we want D. It's really more.
We're, we're, we're trying to prime you on what to expect if we get a C or we get a D.
It, it helps us as we're promoting this opportunity from a vision standpoint. When we get those RFQs. We can say this is the vision we have and that helps us, helps the developers then respond to that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of, I mean, either one of those. I preferably something more in alignment with C. Just because. I think it's just something different for the area. Um. I guess my main concern is just being. Being kind of. Cautious of the area and making sure it's something that people that live there can enjoy it too. I don't want it to be like something that prices people out of the third place that they live next door to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, just to reiterate here, I mean, ultimately, there's a lot of other touchpoints ahead for the council on specifics. Uh, the RFQ, the specifics of the RFP, the evaluation of proposals. This is really about. Setting the table from city support and entitlements that create the pathway. Cause the pathway for, for A was, um, much more straightforward in terms of. We don't have to do a lot, you know, to create those market conditions to create the entitlements for A. We also. Don't get as close to the vision. So it really today was really to make sure that there was support. For introducing into the development of the RFP and the RFQ. The commitment or the ability to leverage public support to, uh, to fill that, uh, market gap. And again, to start, uh, you know, just to be more explicit, I think this will, this will be a change in practice. For Thornton to do a city-initiated rezoning, to put those entitlements proactively in place. To de-risk and potentially bring new development partners to the table. So really, those are the, the questions we're really trying to call for you tonight. It sounds like we have quite a bit of support, but did just want to reinforce it. For both, you know, public that might be listening and, and for you that certainly when it comes to the specifics of the deal points or the partnership. Lots more, uh, opportunities in the future to talk about those.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I just, I really want to make sure, you know, because I don't know how long my time on council will be and. I want to make sure that gets out there because, um, I think this project makes a lot of folks nervous about those types of issues like. You know. Folks that live in South Thornton have seen what happens in North Thornton. And if that were to. You know, get to a point where people are priced out of enjoying and accessing things in their community. It would be a real tragedy. And I know that it's like early in the process, but if we could just keep that. In mind, you know, throughout this whole process, it's just super important.
I have Justin and then Tony.
So I'd just like to add one other thing I would. Suggest is that we also look at uses that would be. Help us market this or help, uh, help us, you know, build some, I, around the site. In the meantime, during all those stages before groundbreaking happens. I think there's a lot of potential that, for that area for e- even just some lower cost. Modifications that that could be done, like for example, a, a food truck park, uh, would be great. And it might actually help out. Some of the areas that are super congested from over concentration of food truck. Yeah. But anyway, I would just, it doesn't have to be that. I just think that you should also throw that into our list of things to do. And to jump on that as quickly as possible, uh, because I think that would help us the long-term vision, but also, you know. Do something with that. And as I said, it'd be a while before something is constructed.
Tony?
Uh, scenario C would be my preference. And, and when I was reading this earlier and then going through it again this evening. It had a awful lot of reminding me of what happened to Elitch's. And that area turned into there where it had a food hall. It has businesses that are supported by residential. And it's all inside of a, uh, perimeter that is older neighborhood. That helps to support it, just like it would be in the sort of shopping centers. So that, when I toured the, uh, Elitch's development a few years ago and saw. What it turned into, um, uh, I, I was very impressed with this. And, and scenario C reminds me of that an awful lot. And that's why I would, my preference would be that direction.
So it sounds like we have consensus with the recommendation. I just have one quick question. I, I agree with everybody as well. I, am I reading this right? That the ROI is twenty-five years?
It, it's the, the period that it says was twenty-five years.
And so the ROI itself, it takes twenty-five years to get that one point, whatever. Okay.
I, I would also say, just to add on to that, we had those, some of those discussions as well, is a lot of this is dependent on. What tools are used and what the, what the partnership, the developer was like. So there's had to be obviously some assumptions made in, in what these scenarios would look like. But yes, that's right.
I got a final comparison of the status quo to one of the students' drawings.
All right. Well, thank you. I think we're all excited and I think what you've heard is the faster the better.
Thank you.
All right, let's take a quick break and then we'll continue on. Tony, are you ready? Sorry. All right. So introductory discussion regarding affordable and essential housing.
I'm just gonna give this directly to Mike.
Great intro.
It's just a time.
And Mike, do you expedite? Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, Mike Garrett, Planning Director. Uh, with me this evening is Josh Alave with Ayers Associates, who were hired as our consultant to work on our affordable housing. We're branding it as Housing Choice Code Amendment as we're going on through, uh. This is a follow-up from our twenty twenty-five development code we just recently adopted. The specifics we're looking for in this code is actually looking to address affordable housing even at a, a housing choice. Even at a higher level than we did with the development code. And Josh will go into a lot of some of those options this evening as part of that discussion. Uh, of note, eighty percent of the funding for this project is through the Proposition one twenty-three local planning grant, which the city was awarded. For this project. Ayers will be focusing on three major components this evening. Education and consistent phrasing, expedited review and process. And can't counter, uh, code standard. Expedited review and process and can counter uh code standards and incentives that may be associated with those. I just wanna mention too, parallel to this process, uh we are looking internally, uh working with the HBA Thornton. Joint Task Force and other home builders and developers to address some of the uh some concerns they had ongoing. Through the development code, which is looking at smaller lot sizes, cottage housing. Setbacks that some had concerns about building heights. Uh which and other items they may have, and those will be coming to council with future items. Those are generally tied to. Our general housing types, not necessarily of uh housing choice that we're working through with this particular grant. The consultant and staff have already begun some community outreach, uh the uh farmer's market last Tuesday, which we did get some uh. Responses back to the community as part of that outreach. We have similar presentation with the Planning Commission October seventh, so we've seen that I will be somewhere what they see. Uh thank you all for um scheduling the one on ones with uh Ayers. Uh they're all scheduled, uh the next. Three weeks, we'll should have those all complete. We're excited about some of the uh individual input that you'll provide with this as well. So this time I'll send the presentation over to to Josh and the year's team.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Pleasure be here with you tonight and again. Since this is a kind of kickoff discussion overview and we have the one on one scheduled, kinda go through some of this information high level. Just so those listening and you all and anyone attending um here in the room. Kinda knows where we're going, what we're doing, what we're not doing as part of this effort. So. Um as Mike mentioned, housing choice is gonna be a word you're gonna hear us using. We've kind of tried to play around with the wording, cause as you'll hear in a little bit. As planners and as professionals, we like to come up with a lot of phrases and words and it's convoluted over time. So. Uh we're gonna start with some team introductions, talk about our timeline scope, uh just show you again kinda the roadmap where we're, we're working towards. Um again, going through that housing choice, attainable, affordable housing, all the fun words we use. Um talk about some of the engagement activities that we'll be doing and then highlighting some of the tools um that that we'll go through. So first team introductions, uh as Mike mentioned, my name's Joshua Hav. I'm our Planning and Development Supervisor at Ayers. Uh been with the company for a little over four and a half years. Prior to that, I have over a decade in the public sector as a planner. Um worked at the same county Broomfield for five years and worked up at the town Windsor for five years, um and then some. Other stuff in the Midwest um in the public sector as well. So um very well versed in terms of not just. The studying, the developing, but how you actually implement and using them day in and day out. And a lot of these policies as well. So really enjoy bringing that lens and most of our team has come from the public sector as well, which is great, but. Um with me tonight is Natalia Sodarello. She is in audience a couple rows behind me. And then also rounding our team, kind of the core for Lindsay Wilson and Carlin Bass. Uh both Natalia and Carlin are fully bilingual, English Spanish, so they will be ones that you see often at a lot of the community events. So that way we're able to address and be there to support the full demographics of the community. Uh so timeline scope, so we did kinda towards the end of August, our our. Initial kickoff as we were fleshing out the final contract and details and then really worked with staff. Over the last month and a half on establishing kind of our protocols, getting, you know, our schedule in place. We did a tour around the community. Um to see all the different projects that have been going on as well as um kind of opportunity areas, which was really cool, cause even. Again, working next door for a number of years and driving through Thornton a few different times, there's so much of Thor and I had never seen. Uh so it's really kinda cool to see. The variety and diversity throughout the community. Uh we built out kind of our engagement strategy, looking at different events and opportunities and the timing and kinda what makes sense. Either for us to be there or to have the materials and resources so staff can be there just to maximize the budget and the visibility. Uh cause we do want this effort and just like staff to be a joint effort. I mean. Once we're gone and done, at the end of the day, it's staff. They're the ones, kinda the doers, day in and day out. So I wanna make sure there is that ownership and. And um pride in the work that comes out of this. Uh and as mentioned, we completed a planning commission kickoff a couple weeks ago, very pretty much identical presentation. Um and then the meeting tonight. Uh so over the next couple months, what we'll be doing is commu-. Community engagement, additional engagement opportunities, some stakeholder conversations, so really targeting different stakeholder groups. Both those that are within the community as well as reaching out to maybe builders, developers. Um that are building in other parts of the metro or other parts of the north, the front range region, just to see. Uh why they're not in Thor and or what what they'd be looking at to come into Thor to build the variety of housing options that are out there. Um we'll be doing, as Mike mentioned, kinda getting into uh expedited review process, evaluating and assess. Assessing your processes, how staff function through the review process, um and looking for opportunities to align. Um the appropriate processes with Proposition one twenty three, um and then kinda working on code. Um so you'll see us kinda pop up from time to time as we move forward with everything slated to commence here. At the end of quarter one, uh twenty twenty six. Um so some of this may be hard to read on the screens, just where they're at, but uh this is some of the educational materials that we're starting to build. And build out for the community and we are working on a project website. It's pretty much done. We were having some link issues yesterday. They, which I think everyone was with all the online issues. But this website will have a lot of educational materials because education is at the forefront. You know, when we hear. Affordable housing, attainable housing, a lot of times there's a preconceived notion that pops into our heads. And so that's why we were working on different naming, terminology, essential housing. Now you're, you see that kinda land on housing choice. Um and what we wanted to do on the left side of the screen there, what you see are kinda personas. Uh personas of community members in Thornton based on salaries, average salaries. You know, where they land on that spectrum of, we'll say affordability, you know. What can they afford in Thornton, in the area in terms of housing based on their average median. Me- median income, excuse me, uh making sure that they're not spending more than thirty percent of their income. On housing, which is kinda what the federal government HUD and also CHAF uses. Um for housing affordability. Um and so on the bottom right, you can see the cost burden, you know, Thor and owners, there's twenty five percent of the population that are cost burdened. They're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Twenty percent renters and then those that are severely cost burdened, um spending, you know, above and beyond on housing. So. A lot of this data comes from the previous housing assessments that have been done, both for the community as well as Dr. Cogs that captured Thornton as well. Um and we're also building from the comments, the goals and vision that came out of the comprehensive plan as well. So we're using a lot of that quantitative data, you know, the number side of things, but we're also wanting to pull in the qualitative. And that's where the conversations with the community, understanding, you know, what's at the heartbeat of the community when it comes to housing and housing choice in Thor. Uh so that's where we get into our different engagement opportunities and activities. And so. Uh the communication strategy, that's where I highlight you the the project website, which I anticipate here. You know, probably end of this week, early next week, that'll be up and running, fully live, ready to go. Um assuming all those little fun quirks and bugs were fixed from whatever happened yesterday. But that will live and have a link embedded on the city website. So we always wanna kinda direct people to city website and then out to that project webpage. Um that's where we'll have the educational materials, upcoming events, recap of what we've heard from the community thus far and just continue that. Communication and transparency. Um of series of community meetings, public meetings, you like this. Um and then the various community events that we'll be working on um throughout the next few months. We do anticipate a survey being built as part of this. We'll kinda look at timing of that in relation to other surveys or other efforts that the city's doing, just cause last thing you wanna do is, you know, get too much. Fatigue with planning, surveys, and community outreach. So we wanna make sure that we time that right. And also make sure that it's strategic enough and focused enough so that more people respond. So as we dive into kinda these tools to consider, they really kinda land in a couple different buckets. There's the regulatory side of things. Kinda regu- regulations, processes, zoning regulations, and then there's a little bit more on the the policy. Side of things, policies and programs. That's where some of your incentives and other things pop up. A lot of these tools are kind of the list of. From the list of different options that the state kinda identifies with Proposition one twenty three, but also things that we wanna talk through. That are really more specific to Thor, because we wanna make sure that it does. Fit the community and fit what's palpable here in the community. Um the first one is the one that we have to do under Proposition one twenty three, but uh they call it the fast track review process. I like to use the phrasing expedited more so because fast track implies that you're slow, which isn't always the case. It's just. The nature of the beast at times, um and it's not always your fault as the government. Sometimes it could be the other side of things. So. Like to look at expedited, how do we move these types of projects to the front of the line, get them across the finish line, because time is money. Um that's something we hear from builders, developers all the time, is time is money. Now, a lot of these tools aren't a one side, you know. You you do the one tool and then that fixes everything. It's usually a series, a combination of these different tools and strategies layered. Implemented and it starts to build a program um that helps move the needle. And so what we'll do is we'll work with staff, identify their current processes. Um and really work to try and create a process that fits that ninety day um. Prop one twenty three requirement with the additional extension opportunities that are built into statute. So. Uh that's something we'll work through together over the next couple months. Um so you'll, a lot of that will be happening kinda behind the scenes. Um and I'm sure staff will provide, you know, periodic updates as we move forward. Um an area that I always like to mention early on because it's one of the more sensitive topics and. You know that there's a lot of communities throughout the region that have either considered it, talked about it, or don't wanna touch it with a ten foot pole, and that's inclusionary zoning. That's where you establish that development projects of, you know, X number of units, a certain percentage has to be incorporated. At a certain area median income threshold um or deed restriction. So. Um you know, on paper, yep, that automatically starts to hit the numbers. It starts to move the needle, but. There's a lot of unintended consequences with that and sometimes it hinders certain development projects as well, just because of costs and. Each project is unique and different, has different constraints. Uh but there are a lot of different programs and communities out there that are doing different things. Um around the notion of inclusionary zoning and what that looks like. Um and oftentimes, it's not always just they build the units. Sometimes it's cash and lose, sometimes it's land dedication. So. A lot of different things there um to unpack and is a big, whoa, that shot for, I didn't even hit the button. Okay, there we go. Uh moving on is uh housing incentives. So it kinda builds on a little bit of what you heard in the last presentation with the yet to be branded redevelopment site. Um here in Thornton, but you know, what kind of incentives are possible? Um you you hear a lot about water. That's always the big one. Unfortunately, with Thornton, you guys are all in process of getting water and. Having the pipelines constructed and getting down here. So um you know, a lot of things going on there with water, but. Other things are impact fees, fees and lose, a lot of things like that, that communities have explored, looked into different waivers. A lot of it comes down to. What are the fees that are in place? What are the base requirements? It can be code, it can be parking, things like that. Where can reductions be made? That just brings down that overall cost. Um of development activity, because one thing that is always eye opening is when you talk to builders and developers and they talk about, okay, you know. To go through the process, we still have to front all that money. So that's a loan we take out to. Be able to do the payer engineers, payer designers, buy the land, et cetera. Then there's a loan for doing all the construction work and the amount of time it takes to go through all that. So that's all money that's being held up and stuck with the various. Yeah, we're gonna talk about. Cost for, you know, percentages. So those are things to all think through, just various variables. Um and so incentives is one of the areas we'll kind of explore, look at some different strategies, what works. In the city, maybe what some opportunities are, bring that back before you to to consider and think through. Interest rates, that's the word I was looking for. Um land baking, uh we hear a lot about water banking, land banking, land banking, holding on to those assets. I mean. And when you control the land, as our economic development specialist says, you you can control a lot of what moves forward and and. You get a guide what happens on that property moving forward. And so with the cost of land, that is such a big asset here and. Have the north metro area and so um being able to have sites under control or be able to work on opportunities where you can leverage. Uh lands that is available is a big tool. Um we've talked a little bit about, Mike mentioned kinda that diverse housing types. A lot of that's been done through code. There's ongoing. Uh work that could be done and be looked at um through what housing options and what housing types are provided. Um throughout the community. Uh another, and I think this might be the last one I'm highlighting at a high level, is kinda that overlay. So you just heard a little bit about the overlay for, you know, strategic. Redevelopment sites. The same can be said with affordable or housing choice sites. If you're looking to. Identify areas where these are near transit locations, near commercial centers. You know, you could put these overlays in place and say, if you're in this. This area and you're looking to bring in some attainable or housing choice opportunities in the community at certain rates and do all these things. Will reduce, you know, parking or will do these, these various pieces, uh these various incentives. And so that. Creates an opportunity as well. So then they don't have to come through and go through the rezoning process and have those challenges. Uh with the rezoning, then it helps with the expedited review process as well. And the last one really brings all together is that dedicated revenue sourcing. Where's the money come from? Um what what pool or fund are you pulling from to help if you're going to leverage a financial based incentive or offset? And when you have to offset other fees. So those are things that we'll be kinda looking at, working with staff to identify all the different systems and tools and. And what makes sense. Um again, like I said earlier, it's not a one size fits all and one tool's gonna make. Or break the project. It's kind of a combination of different tools and strategies. So as we have one on one setup, um don't wanna get into a lot of, you know, big discussion here, since this was more of an intro and kickoff. But curious just from council, um you know, at the end of the day, what does success look like to you when it comes to housing choice in Thor? So open it up and of course, Mayor, leave it to your discretion, but that's the question we have. And then in terms of our next steps. We have our one on one conversations coming up, uh various community events that we'll continue to target with staff and be available at. The community survey and those stakeholder discussions I mentioned earlier. So I will back up to. Success and what that looks like and.
Justin.
Curious? Uh yeah, so I think one indicator I would look for is a material change in the. Output of the uh housing needs assessment indicators that would show that there are uh fewer. Uh units shortage and I think an even stronger measure of success is if that distribution was. Concentrated on more of the lower income uh scale. So if we get, if we saw a decrease. In in amount of housing shortage that we have for the, you know, lower AMI. Uh affordability range on those houses. I think that would be a success to me because it'd be indicated that we have built more. In that, in those areas and that uh. You know, I guess I would also wanna make sure that the other indicators. Insinuate that, right? We wouldn't want that to go down because people are leaving Thornton. But um you know, all the, all things, all the, all other parts equal, then yeah, that's, that's one thing I'd like to see is. Uh a measure of success of this.
I think that's great because that's right, the ultimate outcome, right? See those numbers changing uh while you're playing. And commission members actually highlight that as well. So it's really good.
Roberta.
Um yeah, I agree with that. I think the other piece is just um. Um well, obviously like affordability, attainability and then um from there, I think. What I hear from people in the community is that they wanna see things that are more walkable. And sometimes that's not exact, like their vision of it isn't exactly what comes to us and. Some of these things, like, you know, we had a few weeks ago, but it's. Like, I think once we kinda pull the Band-Aid off and get folks used to more in-field development. It's gonna make for a better, a better city, because in the nineties, it was just. Specifically the word I lived in, war two, it's just tons of housing without any options for. Any type of shopping, like food sources and the south part of the ward and things like that. So. Just like accessibility to amenities like grocery stores and things like that within. Maybe somewhat walking distance or not such a long drive.
Well, it definitely goes to your overall affordability in the community, you know, if you have to drive everywhere. And have a car, you know, it takes you a long time to get from point A to point B.
You know, we just have some older housing developments, like I'm thinking of like Remington and Brandon Place down in south. War two, where there isn't anything near you at all. Like you're going miles up Colorado to get a few miles up Colorado to get groceries or all the way over toward one and two, Washington, the eight, so.
On being very mindful of those infill locations and even re redevelopment of some existing.
Yeah, yeah, there's opportunity for that too. So, you know, using up some of the space we have, because if any, continuing to annex and build out is just not sustainable and it's expensive.
Maximize your infrastructure that already exists, for sure.
Yeah.
Other comments?
I'll just say the variety of housing types is just a high priority uh in my mind, just because we have a lot of missing middle and things in Colorado that are uniquely different, that inhibit our ability. So uh, there are builders that have solutions for that and having the code and things that allows for that variety to be built. I think is imperative because there's other options like condos that just really are effective or on the table. For developers, you know, we're making some progress in that space, but it's gonna take years to assess uh that legislation and see how that works out. So um, a code that fits variety that will attract those that have that product in other states, municipalities, to show that we are open for business in this regard.
Awesome.
I think one other factor says, isn't just money to be affordable housing, but it would be cost all development for the um this average like turnover time from application to construction to decrease. And um, and also the total like average application cost to go down. I think you, you know, that could be a good measure even for just looking at this affordable. Segment or all around, I think that should be something that we should strive for in our our objectives annually when we try to look at strategy and stuff like that.
I have one more thing, diverse locations, uh, we were to designate certain areas with zoning changes or uh anything along those measures. I don't, I don't like to see when it's segmented or, you know, there's, you know, back in the day it was red lighting and things. And now I feel like, that doesn't fit through this area and I hear that and I don't like it. Um, because I think that mix of residents, it's better for those that live there to have that exposure. It's better for kids, it's, you know, I, it just seems like there's a lot of NIMBYism in, in out there that um, we're all for attainable housing, but just not by me. And um, success would be the opportunity to deploy this housing citywide regardless of what it looks like now or what the demographics are. I think that's really important also.
Yeah, so it's best to mix and disperse, like I have neighbors.
People off, but it's ultimately what needs to happen and what is best.
Yep.
Well, and I'll piggyback on that too. I think a big part of success is having the community buy-in because that would solve some of those issues. Yeah. Where it's not the NIMBYism, it's because it had, the community has already agreed and bought into not attainable, not affordable. I like housing choice, I think that's a much better, and I'm sure in a couple of years it'll be something different, but for today, that sounds better. But, but that community appreciation and value of having choices in housing is going to be critical for this to be successful.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think it's good to always remind the community and keep that at the forefront because we go through like comprehensive plan process, it's identified as goals, community said it. But then when it starts to become a reality or a few years passes, we kind of forget what was discussed. And same with the housing assessment, that information came out, but then it's been a couple of years. So we kind of forget where new people move into town.
Well, the assessment is one thing, right? It says what we're missing.
Yep.
But not what we want. So there's a gap between the two from a community viewpoint. And then some of the options that you've listed in here seem more like sticks than carrots. And I tend to be a more of a carrot person, uh, I feel like we get more opportunities and the creative solutions when we don't put the stick first in order to get solutions in place. But what I'm hearing overall is that there's a lot of excitement for what this could be and the potential for the community overall. You know, all of the people that are here already and the people that could be here, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. And I, I would say I wish I could solve NIMBYism as a whole. I'm sorry, I cannot commit that that will happen, but we will definitely do our best to educate and continue, build some good resources.
Good ideas, that solves a lot of those issues.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Great organizational review.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna first introduce um John Nass, our consulting partner with BlackLine Consulting. Um, and so we've got John on the line. I do want to thank John, he's in Toronto, so he's a couple of hours behind us. He's in the time zone with Councilmember Kundo, so thanks for hanging with us. Uh, John, John's gonna walk you through uh some of the history of this project. On the tail end of his, I will um have a brief presentation to talk about next steps. But just as a reminder uh to the council, to employees that might be listening or to members of the public that might be hearing about this. We did um, uh, uh, earlier this year, sent out solicitations for consulting partners to take a step back. Uh, Thornton has changed um, uh significantly over the last fifteen, twenty years. So it's a growth uh of the city and expectations for services and needs. And the city's done a really good job of evolving to individual needs. But this was an opportunity to take a step back and look at our organization comprehensively in terms of how do we meet the needs of our organization and our community today? And how do we plan for the future? And so I'm gonna kick it to um John to share a little bit about uh what they found. This presentation is pretty high level and so there are a lot of detailed resources in your packet. And we have shared a number of very detailed resources with our employees uh through the internet internally as well. So with that, I'm gonna introduce uh John Nass.
Great, good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent. Uh, next page, I'll uh walk through. So just for today's agenda, uh, we'll just do a quick overview of contexts. Um, you know, why we're here, what we did in terms of approach. Uh, we'll summarize some of the findings, uh, key findings that, that we had as part of the review. Our recommendations, we'll take you through just the top line uh structure uh of the organization that, that we're proposing and some of the changes. Um, as Tanzi identified, in the report, it actually goes into quite a lot more detail uh through each of the, the kind of major departments and divisions, uh, so you'll be able to see that. We've also put together uh a proposed implementation plan. Uh, and again, this is BlackLine's recommendation, typically what we'd expect is the city will then take that away uh and then review it internally and build out their own implementation plan. Next page. All right, perfect. So I think, you know, first of all, as we did this review, the, the, I think the context is important. Uh, as we came into this uh, uh, newish uh city manager, we also understood that, you know, from the background, there hadn't been a lot of uh organizational or big organizational design that had occurred over the, the many years. Uh, so it had been organic, which again, not dissimilar than, than other municipalities. But when you look at the growth and some of the things that are, you know, kind of happening to the city, it's really good to kind of take a step back and say, at, you know, ev- every so often, say, how should we be organized? How do we make sure that we are organized for the future? We've got the right capabilities, structure and so on. So that was really the backdrop for, for this review is to, to make sure that, you know, as the, the city continues to grow, you've got the right structure in place, you've got the right reporting lines, you've got the right capacity and capabilities. Next page. In terms of approach, uh, we, we took a fairly uh traditional approach from, from uh how we go about doing organizational design, which from our perspective is, is broad. Uh, we kind of want to make sure that we get kind of broad engagement as well as uh where possible, depth of that engagement as well. So quite a few different tactics that we use. We have an information request that we, um, uh, to, that we send out early on, gather some information and data that helps build just our context about the city and what's happening. We also then layer on one-on-ones, so I came down for about a week. Uh, we were, did interviews with staff. Uh, we also did some focus groups uh for some more deep dives in some of the areas that um, uh, in, in the RFP that were a bit more focused. Um, but to get the breadth, we also like to get the employees' perspective. And, and uh, what we find is the combination of focus groups and employee survey is a nice balance. We can't meet everyone uh in person, uh, but it does give us at least the opportunity to hear from employees in terms of what they see as issues and opportunities. Lastly, we worked with the city uh to come up with uh some, some peers. Uh, and we uh put together information requests as well as an interview. Uh, so we were able to, to interview four, four of your peers and gather kind of just basic information from the others. So a combination of that was all very helpful for us to, to build our evidence and analysis to compare, contrast some of the things that the city may want to consider. Next page. So at a high level, there was uh five, what I would say kind of key findings. Um, first is, is what we call span of control, uh, which is i- in lay terms, that, that's just the number of people that report into another individual. And what we found is that um, it's quite high in, in some cases and, and particularly for the city manager. Uh, and in the report, you'll see uh the comparison to, to the other peers. Um, the city manager had quite a few uh different um, uh, or quite a few uh number of direct reports as well as varying levels, uh, which again, those are things that sometimes you can't avoid. But definitely, as we kind of looked at the why and when, it was more of a, a, a question of, you know, this had just kind of organically kind of grown over time. So it was a good point in time to actually look at and say, well, how should we set it up for the future and for the growth? Um, the second was around what we call fragmented structures and inconsistent reporting lines. Here it was about making sure that we've got clear accountability uh for those reporting lines. And sometimes that can cause some issues uh with the way that uh information is disseminated um, across some of the, the areas in the organization. The next is what we call, what we found was, and again, not, not dissimilar than others, but as you get to a certain su- sc- sa- um, s- size and scale, the, there can be siloing that occurs. And this can be culturally, this could be also just in terms of uh kind of in the way that information travels throughout the organization. It does tend to be difficult when you've got multiple um, uh, city departments uh across the um, you kind of the different buildings. However, you know, given newer technology, it can be a lot easier to, to break down some of those barriers. Um, one of the points that, that we drew it out from the, the, the survey, it's not just about the staffing kind of structure and capability. It's also about the policies and procedures. And again, there's some opportunities that as we kind of went through this, we don't just look at the reporting lines and, and kind of structure. We also look at things that can compound some of the issues. And that is uh one thing that we did find both from the staff survey as well as from our analysis as well. And finally, one of the last things that we found is some of the internal support groups that you think of, HR and IT, much more focused on transactional type services rather than strategic partners. And again, in this day and age, I'd say HR, you know, your human capital and the staff that you have in IT are probably your biggest resources to, to deliver services. Next page. So what we've done is we've outlined here um, two different categories of uh recommendations. Um, the two broad themes are what we call kind of organizational and organization and positions, which is around the structure and, and size for the complexity of your organization, so it's that purple. The green is, is less on kind of structural changes and more around process improvements or things that help you govern and improve the way that you deliver services. So I'll get into some of these in, in a little bit more depth, but I think one of the key things that we, what we wanted to do is start right from the top. Um, luckily, as we were doing this review, uh, the city was also undertaking the kind of the strategic priorities. So we're able to meld the two together, uh, which is really helpful to make sure that uh we can set up your, some of these changes so that it will help deliver or help support you as you deliver on those strategic priorities. So right from the top, what you'll find is uh, as we get into the, the structure, is really looking at the top-down. What are some of the portfolios? How would we break up the, the services that's in a meaningful way? And in some cases, it's more theme-based around some of the priorities that you have. And in others, it's gonna be more around um, a, a function. Uh, and typically, that's what we'd find with the size of, of your organization. Um, we've also created some, as a consequence of that, we've created some dedicated groups around transportation, um, community engagement, which what we found was there's lots of community engagement across the organization as it was, as it's structured today. But bringing that together, that can actually become a bit more cohesive and help reduce some of the silos that we've found. We've also talked about, about uh planning and economic development, so it's one of the areas that we tend to look at, especially for uh cities that are on a, a growth agenda, uh, and how to, how to really help make that move forward. Um, lastly, one of the, the things that we've found as well from your peers, but also that we see across, kind of across North America, is the importance of IT and technology. And kind of two levers there, there's one which is the risk side of it, which is cyber. Um, you know, it's difficult not to open up the paper and look at the news and see, uh, you know, it's an, an organization that's been hit. Uh, or even just an, an outage, you know, the other day, uh, Amazon had quite a big outage, uh, and a few weeks ago it was Microsoft. So really important, so, so from our perspective, one of the things that we've suggested is elevating uh the role of, of IT and see it more as a strategic partner across the organization. I will get into some of the other details, but within the report, we have a write-up for each one of these thirteen recommendations. Next page. So here, hopefully you can see this, but it's the kind of aqua blue uh color is what we're suggesting for some of the changes. And I think notably what you'll see is what we've done is structure them, what I would call more around portfolios of service, uh, which have commonality. Uh, so areas where it makes sense for those kind of services and, and capabilities to, to work together more collectively, uh, rather than having them kind of separate across the organization. Some uh maintain the same, you can see that, which is more of the aqua, so things like police chief, fire chief, uh, and, and, and so on. Those will consider, you know, consider, consider, continue to, to report into um, the city manager. While others have been slightly restructured, you can see that chief information officer has been elevated and pointed out as well. Next page. Um, what we've done is we've put together, typically when we do our implementation plan, we look at and say, well, what are the priorities in terms of what we've outlined in terms of, for, for the changes that we've suggested, which are the thirteen? Um, and then what are the dependencies between them, if any? And then kind of work that out. We also consider capacity for change as well as we look at building that out. Again, this is a recommendation uh in terms of implementation plan. Typically, what we'd suggest is that the city takes that away and says more practically, what's best for you? Are there any synergies around other things that are happening? Uh, in some cases, we find that either the, the, the city will decide on either making things uh move a bit quicker because they've got things that they want done sooner. Uh, and also in other cases where maybe they're gonna push some things out because it just makes more sense because they've got other, other uh projects or changes underway. Next page. So in conclusion, we actually think that you're quite well positioned. Um, a couple of things to uh on, on that is one, the strategic priorities that have been set, some of the information that we've got from your, your peers, but also Jen, uh, then what we found is, you know, just from the leadership itself, that you're in a good position for uh, for moving this forward. Um, we also found uh, when we do these reviews, sometimes there's a bit kind of mixed reaction from staff and it can be some apprehension around change uh based on the, the, um, you know, what the outcome would be for the organizational restructuring. What we found actually was quite positive. Uh, most people, the, the staff that we surveyed, you know, they were looking forward to, to some of these changes because it's gonna help improve their ability to deliver services and reduce maybe some of the friction or collaboration issues that they've been having. And lastly, uh, just that key point, which is, you know, doing this, I think the timing is, is, is perfect. You've got the new strategic priorities and you're well aligned to deliver on them. So with that, I will pause. Um, and Tanzi, did you want to start your presentation or did you want me to answer your questions?
I'll, I'll pause for just one second in case um, we'll have any questions for John and he'll, he'll be on the line at the, at the conclusion of my presentation as well.
Any questions yet?
Any questions yet?
Okay, well, uh, I will jump in here in terms of uh now I see this as a baton being handed from Blackline to us on the uh city team and in terms of uh what to do next. And so I will share just a little bit about what has already happened in terms of our communication with employees and what uh what is continuing to happen with those employees and the leaders in our organizations. Um, some of this, there are some redundant slides in here just because we uh we know that people have the possibility to pick up either one of these uh presentations. So uh I'll, any redundancies, I'll jump through pretty quickly here. So this is just a reminder, we've been showing this pretty frequently in in terms of in our organization, just to remind uh folks back earlier in the year when we released this solicitation, these are the things that we asked the consulting teams to uh pro- provide proposals to us and this largely shaped the analysis that Blackline uh provided on our behalf. So that, you know, these these were kind of the grounding goals. And I think largely we do have recommendations that are responsive to these areas of inquiry. Uh, I'm gonna represent slightly differently. Uh, John spoke a lot about the first two bullets here. Uh, much of our focus on implementa- evaluation and implementation in the short term is on that first bullet in terms of what are the structural impacts? What are the next steps? How do we actually uh decide wh- what is best for Thornton and how to move those things forward? Certainly in the mid and long term, many of those structural elements do have companion process role clarity, collaboration kinds of recommendations. We we certainly in the longer term are are gonna wanna dive into those and get the most benefit out of those. I I do wanna though spend a little time and recognize one of the things that's very important for the City of Thornton leadership team and to me is that you will see in the report some pretty detailed findings around how employees are experiencing being an employee in Thornton. And so one of the things that we have always intended is that this um survey becomes a baseline that we can evaluate over time. How are we building capacity in our supervisors? How are we supporting our employees with communication? How are we making sure that they that they have the kinds of tools that um help facilitate uh them meeting the needs of the community? So that third piece here is really important. One of the things that we will be doing uh in addition to looking at those first two is identifying what are those opportunities, particularly in work groups where we might have some pain points? What are the additional points of engagement where we can get additional feedback about how to better support both our supervisors and our employees to be successful? And so uh that is a another place where we'll be spending time over the coming year as well. Uh, things like collaboration, uh internal communication uh that, you know, that right now for the most part, the the good news is we found most of our employees really like working for the City of Thornton. So I think now it's the opportunity of how can we make that experience even uh better for them? Uh, I won't spend time here because John already did, but just um for continuity there. So uh, what are we gonna do next uh in in terms of uh evaluating the recommendations from uh uh Blackline and implementing those? One of the things that we intend to maybe move more aggressively than that implementation plan that you saw from Blackline is we we do want to start to move forward with some of those foundational changes in the city manager's office that really start to create the capacity to implement some of those later recommendations. And so as we enter the uh latter part of this year into early next year, we will start to look at those assistant city manager roles that have been recommended and that assistance to the city manager role. Uh, primarily, the assistance to the city manager role was, I think, was a priority in Blackline's implementation recommendation and in ours. And again, the uh alignment of these structural changes to support the newly adopted strategic plan. So we do wanna start to build that infrastructure to support our action teams uh to ensure that we are um, we are uh not, that isn't a plan on itself, but this is a plan in action in our organization. Um, the the other piece, we have already started some workshops with members of the senior leadership team to evaluate uh the recommendations from Blackline. Uh, Blackline um did a really good job. As you look at their report, there's some really good detailed observations, but um but ultimately, they're not in our organization and they don't have all the access uh to um perspectives that our employees do. And so uh we have begun to en- engage with people to identify are there gaps in uh their recommendations that would make them more implementable? Are there tweaks that we might wanna make around the end, the the edges that um optimize their their thinking? Um, um, even more, some of the recommendations they are making are somewhat uh difficult in terms of implementation. And so thinking about the advantages and disadvantages um to make sure that uh any of the investments that we make in in terms of those organizational changes that we're gonna, we think we're gonna get sufficient return from those. So we have, we've already begun uh some of those conversations with um our members of our senior leadership team and and that will continue. The next piece is, uh, as you will see, there are some um uh more detailed charts than were included in this presentation, but um they don't cascade down in in terms of detailed impacts on our entire employee workforce. So there's a lot of much more detailed design questions in terms of placing individual employees into new roles, into the new org structure. And so as we did determine those things that we need to move forward, we do have some more detailed planning to figure out what those uh specific impacts might be. And uh, you know, as the council is aware, we have worked to try to accumulate some vacant positions throughout the last year that give us some flexibility and to implement some of these recommendations. And I I think as I shared at the last meeting, we do um believe that there's some flexibility in next year's budget to try to do um to implement uh high priority recommendations. Um, but we are going to have to prioritize the recommendations in terms of the resources that are available and and potentially phase some of the recommendations into future budget years as we don't have resourcing um in in this next year. Um, our hope is to by the end of uh this year, moving into next year to have that evaluation uh complete and have an implo- in implementation and play, plan in place. As John said, there likely will be some level of phasing. There are some interdependencies amongst the recommendations that, you know, implementing um particular recommendations unlock the ability to um to um uh implement other recommendations. So we we are trying to find the balance between uh being very thoughtful in what we do and how we do it with, we know that some employees are really feeling uncertainty um of wanting to know more specifically what changes are gonna be made and and whether they're gonna make, when they're gonna be made. So we do intend to move very aggressively through um evaluation and implementation planning for the remainder of this year. Um, what does employee communication engagement look like to date and what does it look like going forward? One of the things that we have uh shared a commitment to our organization from the outset here is to be as transparent as we could as new information became available through this process. And we have uh tried to uh to do that. So again, this was a highly participative process uh through this point. So there was a lot of employee feedback that went into shaping the recommendations that Blackline made. We've been providing both written and verbal updates at key milestones uh throughout this process, whether that's our all employee call or messages to all employees. Uh, we have created an intranet site now for employees with all of the resources from the start of the this project through now. Um, we have uh since we have received Blackline's final report uh those those dis- recommendations have been previewed and discussed with the senior leadership team. We did do targeted meetings with um some of the most impacted um departments with their uh senior leaders ahead of the um recommendations becoming public so that they could support their employees and their teams. Uh, we we did uh share these recommendations on our all employee call last week. We also had a meeting with um all of our supervisors and shared um our expectations of how supervisors were gonna support employees through this process and shared with them some of the resources that we've created with them, which include uh specific charts um and tables for each um uh department. We've shared um created customized frequently asked questions that both ju- speak generally to the study and some of the potential impacts to specific departments. So we, we are trying to be very intentional about um helping to be transparent uh with our employees and and to partner with our supervisors as best as we can. Change is difficult. Um, and so while we, while we won't be able to mitigate uh completely the impact of of change, um again, we're we're doing everything that we can to try to support uh supervisors and employees with uh transparency through that process. So what's ahead, again, I already spoke to the um workshops that we're doing with senior leadership team members. Through those workshops, they are identifying subject matter experts that need to be involved and answering really specific key questions uh that need to be evaluated as we work together on that evaluation and implementation plan. And again, uh we'll continue to provide updates um to the organization and uh the council as we move forward with that implementation plan. So, you know, here's some um key messages that we are are sharing with our organization that I think are helpful to share in this is um in no way are any of the recommendations meant to reflect poorly on the professionalism uh public service commitment or or um uh performance of individual employees. So that, you know, the Blackline report does have have some observations about opportunities to to improve. They are looking generally at systems and structures, not at individual employees. Um, again, we have a really good starting spot with some really good prov- thought provoking ideas for the future. That doesn't replace our organization's um opportunity to evaluate and scrutinize those to make sure that we are making changes that are in uh the best interest. We are gonna be working hard to think about uh the needs of the organization now and into the future and as best as we can to um meet those future needs in a way that that um balance the interests of employees. Uh, certainly, we we are gonna have employees that are gonna be impacted as we move forward with uh the implementation of changes. Um, we we will likely see some employees that will see some changes uh in terms of their functional alignment or potentially where their focus is. So that could end up with, you know, some individuals working and new or new supervisors or supervisors taking on uh new or different responsibilities. We think it is going to be a very rare circumstance where positions will be eliminated as a result of this process. We can't rule that out at this uh point because again, we have not completed uh that that evaluation and implementation planning in the level of detail that that would answer all those questions. And we are just asking our organization to be as patient and as flexible as they can. Um, ultimately, we do think that as much as there might be um some short term im- impacts that uh some employees um might uh not see as positive, we think in the long term this also creates some new career paths and career opportunities for employees as well. So I think, you know, there there is a balance here of uh trying to make sure that employees are working in the the best possible structural alignments. You know, as John uh spoke to, having peers that bring value um to them in terms of supporting their work processes and uh creating the opportunities for collaboration across the organization. So with that, I I'm available for um any questions and and John is still with us as a representative of Blackline.
Any questions? Justin?
Uh, yeah, so I understand you correctly, you're really focusing on the changes to the city management office first, which makes a lot of sense because some of these are very big overhauls that you're gonna require those new leadership positions to be involved with that. Uh, I do have questions about some of the recommendations on the tail end of the list. In particular, um number eight, strengthening payroll governance and internal controls. So to what degree is that recommendation dependent on the city manager organizational overhaul?
Yeah, I mean, I I I don't think it's necessarily directly related. I mean, um, so um in their structural recommendations, human resources uh does become uh departments. Right now, human resources is con- considered a division. Um, our human resources director is not a member of the senior leadership team um sort of working amongst that peer group. That would change um if their recommendations are implemented. Um, the human resources director in in their recommendation does become a direct report to the city manager um under this organization structure. So certainly does both of those things allow potentially some additional city uh support from the city manager's office to prioritize those efforts um in in terms of looking at, I think ultimately, that is a place where um I think Blackline, not to to speak for Blackline, but I know this is an area of inquiry that that happened through them uh making the recommendations where they looked at more aggressive structural changes um in terms of realigning functions and felt like through stronger governance uh processes and and stronger role clarity that um some of the areas of uh potential uh gap, potential gaps from miscommunication could be addressed. And so the only other piece that I will add to that, that I think, again, some of the changes in the strategy, in the city manager's office potentially does out uh unlock is um I I am certain none of you have the strategic plan yet uh memorized by heart, but one of the organizational excellence initiative is to look at missing uh cross-apartmental governance structures. And so that is one of the elements of the strategic plan. So again, adding the assistance to the city manager helps to uh kind of supercharge some of those efforts to support our action teams and the strategic plan. So I think there are a couple of plate, a couple of different ways that those city manager's office changes, I think, can help facilitate that specific recommendation.
Okay. And then the overall organizational, all of these recommendations, whole organizational review. Um, you know, and obviously has huge impacts to the way the city is managed. What is the role of council on this? Where as far as decision makings go versus the decision making the city manager? Um, because I just would like to make sure that whatever role council has, that we understand it and that we um do uh are supportive of city manager's role in making these changes.
Yeah, so I mean, part of the the reason for the presentation tonight is is generally, you know, throughout this process, we've wanted to make sure that Blackline heard from you early in the process. Um, and part of tonight is just ensure that there's alignment in the vision in terms of now that um as John shared, the strategic plan helped in that to try to make sure that the strategic plan was reinforcing this planning and this planning was reinforcing the strategic plan. So generally, uh, you know, would um hope to get some feedback about whether you know, generally, you see that this aligns with some of the areas of priority for the organization. Functionally, in terms of the role of the council, uh the charter and our ordinances give the uh city manager pretty broad operational authority in terms of um aligning the uh resources of the city uh to the the goals that the the council has aligned uh in future years um and through future actions. Certainly, the the one place where I do not have authority is to fundamentally change appropriations or to change um FTE accounts. So there there uh could be future actions that we would need approval by the council related to the um future budgets. Um, one, there it, there are some budget ordinances uh that speak to department names. And so there are some uh minimal uh places where uh future council action might be necessary. But in terms of aligning uh employee, existing employee resources and existing financial resources, I've got a broad um uh authority. But but again, wanna make sure that I do that in a way that But, but again, want to make sure that I do that in a way that is aligned with, uh, the, the goals and priorities of the city council.
Yeah, that was well said. And the other thing is kind of the intersection between your policy and your legislative powers and appropriate staff and administrative decisions to carry those out. So that's kind of where it intersects, but ultimately the city manager has authority um, over all of the decisions under the charter. But there is an intersect here and certainly appropriations is, uh, where you have quite a bit of direct power over this for positions.
Thank you for sharing that. I think that is fantastic news. I really am, you know, to answer your question, I'm supportive of all thirteen recommendations and I'd like for us to get there uh, in a way that, you know, makes sense for Thornton. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that the city manager's role is, is in the driver's seat on a lot of this. And I would just say that, you know, encourage you to come to council and try to change the budget and that make the legislative changes. Um, you know, let us, let us know and, and of course we have to weigh those decisions. Uh, but I think, you know, we can get there over time. And, uh, just want to make sure that we're supportive in, in your endeavors on this.
Thank you.
I think you've done a great job keeping us up to speed on where you've been through all this process, which is probably why there's not a whole lot of questions because this is kind of culmination of those multiple conversations. So thank you for the continued progress.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, John, for being with us and, and for great partnership throughout this process.
Take care. Have a good day. Thanks.
All right. Council's rules of order.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a follow-up conversation from a previous discussion about the potential changes to council's rules of order and procedure. I'm just going to do a quick review of what council directed prior and a proposed community presentations addition to the rules of order and procedure and next steps. So here's the list of all of the items that we discussed at the prior planning session and council's direction. I'm not going to go through all of these, but these changes were incorporated into your rules of order and procedures that are attached for your review. And, um, I'll note that numbers five and six, there are no changes to those for council's direction. And then council wanted to review further, um, an option for community presentations. And so in coordination with legal, we came up with this language here, which says that city council may invite representatives. And we, um, came up with a language of invite instead of recommend or, or request because that kind of gives council a little bit more authority and, um, control over who can actually come to the meetings and present. And so if you have the word, you know, request, representatives can request and that kind of opens the door for everyone. You have to allow everyone to be able to do that. So we have here that council may request representatives of community groups, partner organizations or other governmental entities to provide informational presentations. And, um, the presentations shall be limited to subjects or matters related to city policies, programs and services. And so functionally, how this would work is, uh, council member could bring up kind of like you do for recognizing months of the year, uh, bring up to the rest of council uh, at an update or planning session that, uh, they've received a request or that they would like to invite a group to come in and, um, present under audience participation, or I'm sorry, under presentations instead of audience participation. And so with that, I would take your feedback and any other questions or feedback you have on any of the changes.
Any questions? I just had one. I thought there was also the request to move the council comments back to right behind audience participation. I thought we had discussed that as well.
That, that did come up in the, in your last council meeting, but wasn't a part of it.
Yeah, it was just in the update. Yeah, right before. Yeah.
I, I certainly if there's clear directions, there was some discussion during the council meeting following. Uh, and certainly we, we can accommodate that request if that's the will of the council.
Yeah, I think, I remember thinking about this after the meeting because we had discussed like that the eight minutes was too long and then with everybody speaking for eight minutes, it would be like over an hour. Was that correct? So we went back and forth, but since then I've gotten more, more comments from the community that they want to see it after because
They want us to respond.
They want us to respond to their comments. And then we have all these other presentations. It's like, we're just going back to what we should have had in the first place, which we did. Yeah, what we did have in the first place, which we should have never even messed with and, um.
And then Justin agreed to limit his comments.
I said I would try to limit them.
Please. And so I think we should do that because people want to hear the con, the, our response to what they come and speak to us about if we have that.
Chris?
I would keep it as it is now. And that's again, the, the reason being with these hearings, that's also residents that are trying to speak on something like a development project that affects where they live. And yes, our council comments are important, but I would not elevate whatever we have to say over those that are really fighting for a voice to be heard on some development project. And we just went through that with the Maker project and a lot of people came out. So we would have delayed all those people an additional hour so that we could speak before.
Except we didn't speak that night.
We didn't.
So we still have that option.
We were exhausted because it was midnight or so at that.
We still always have that option for no comment.
Option, but even if it's one resident that's coming to voice their opinion on a development that asks them and their property and they have something to say, making them wait that additional upwards to an hour is, um, I don't, I don't think it's just beneficial to the residents. Our, that is absolutely city business when we're talking about one of those hearings. And our council comments rarely, if ever, are actual city business. They're more announcements and what we've done or personal matters in which we want to share with the community. And every resident has our phone numbers and we have the ability to talk. Then they walk into my office individually to have conversations with me that aren't limited to eight minutes. There's thirty minutes to an hour sometimes. So I'm in favor of keeping it the way it is right now. I think we did make the one correction of putting the public comment back up. And I think that was really beneficial because people want to speak to us. But I would not say that any one of our comments should delay people speaking in hearings. Because that to me just seems like a higher priority of city business.
Roberta?
I respectfully disagree because I think we're just going off of the feelings of what just happened with Maker instead of thinking about how things have been for years and years and years. And I just don't want us making a decision based off of one group and one specific thing, like people are like, just like they don't even want to listen all the time to like the whole thing. It's just, it was just the flow of the meeting for years and they do want to hear what we have to say. I mean, I guess we could say, you know, sometimes we're boring and we just repeat things, but some folks, you know, want to hear what we have to say. I've just heard it numerous times. So I just feel like it should go back to the way it was and a lot of people have told me that. And I think we have a tendency on this council to make decisions based on what's happening now or something that's happening currently or feelings over other people or something like that, instead of thinking about bigger picture of what, what's happened, what's, what's going to happen in the future, just a bigger picture, bigger scope view. And many, many, many residents were just used to their traditional way of doing it. And if they come and talk, they want a response. They don't want to have to wait like two more hours for it. So that's my opinion.
Chris?
I think we made those decision, decisions and changes prior to the Maker. So that's just an example of what I was using because it's relatively new. But I don't think that was the direction and why we made those changes. And again, they want a response from us. We have a responsibility then maybe to contact that individual that was speaking to us directly during the comment. And we always ask staff to speak with them. And then there's opportunity for us to be in a more engaged environment where we can sit down and actually talk to those people outside of our eight minutes. So I hear what you say and that's how it's been for a long time. But there's a multitude of examples of just because we did something for a long time, doesn't mean it's the correct thing to continue to do.
I just think the way people see this though, is that we're putting the voices of outside entities and developers above the voice of the people in the whole process. So that's all I'll say about that.
Residents are not outside entities.
They want a response from council. They want a response from council.
So we've heard from both of you and your different viewpoints. Tony, you pressed your button.
Yes, I, I think that the council comments should come after public comments. Uh, mostly, uh, yes, all of the time we talk about, uh, things we attended and what we did and what have you. But that's usually because by the time we get a chance to speak, the people that got up and addressed us in the first place have left the building. And, uh, so we have no opportunity to respond directly back to them. Yes, we have the opportunity to follow up with them at a later date. But, uh, uh, I feel that it's in all fairness to council, we should be able to address that at the time, at the evening, uh, that somebody would address a comment or concern directly to us.
Justin or Teresh?
I think it should be put back where it was. I agree. People did leave. I'm frustrated. I can't work to come to you, but I think that they can, they can hold and wait. I did when I needed a comment.
Justin?
We want to hear what happens. So just make a choice. I really don't care, but people in my neighborhood have specifically asked that they want to hear what I have to say. And they want to hear all of us say, I'm just kidding. But, um, they, they have been calling and asking me, asking to move it back. And since it's not something I feel strongly about, I'm gonna, um, I'm going to, uh, you know, I have to keep for my residents who've come into the meetings and asked for it. So I'd say, yeah, let's, let's move it back because, um, that's what they're calling me up to do. And they do both. They want to hear what I got to say in the meeting and then they'll call me up to tell me how dumb that was of what I just said. So it's a circle of comments.
So I'm okay moving it back, but I do think as a council, we can agree that if we know we have a contentious public hearing coming up, we can pre-plan to either have no comment or very limited response to what the public comment was. And we don't have to give our weekly updates of what we did. Because with Maker, we knew, we had a room full of people ready to talk. So we know when those events are going to come up, we can adjust our own conduct based on that. Because I get what you're saying, Chris, because I agree with you. Business comes first. I would put council comment at the very end because nobody listens to it anyway.
I just don't want to diminish the size of the topic. There's a few people that come in to speak.
I agree.
The family that lived along I-25. There was three speakers, but they were very passionate. They were very respectful. And they put the time into the weight to speak to.
And maybe we can get a heads up because they sign up in advance. Maybe during the update, we can get an, a, understanding of how many have signed up to speak. And even if it's just one or two, we can be respectful of their time.
Yeah, that's, that's the goal. I don't want it to be like, oh, there's a hundred people. We'll be quiet and go through the business. But I, if it's two people that want to talk about something.
We can make that an agenda item in the update to let us know if anyone has signed up to speak. And if nobody has, then we can pontificate for a full eight minutes, Justin.
I haven't said. Last time I stopped in like four and a half minutes, I was saying, the trend is going down.
I like it. That sounds like consensus to move the comment back to right after public. And then just as a council, we will monitor ourselves on the timing. But if you could let us know during, for any public hearings, if anyone has signed up to speak during the update, that would help us.
Uh, so we'll know who has signed up online. We won't necessarily know who has signed up in the chambers yet, but I can try to make a note to you or something, um, before we start meeting.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay. So, uh, next up is the ordinance will come back on October twenty eighth for first reading. And then second reading will be on December second. Um, that will be the last order of business for the current council.
Okay, thank you. Over our last briefing, are there any border committee reports? Chris?
We started our legislative talks with the CML Policy Committee. Some of the, um, common things that were discussed were, uh, sex offenders and distances. North funds pushed that up through CML so that we'll have some discussions around that. Another one that was somewhat interesting was the additional taxation and home rule, uh, authority to enact that on Airbnb's and, uh, there's, seems to be a large support around that as well too. But with home rule, then we could literally look at what level we want to enact or not enact. So I don't see anything problematic there, but those were two of the more relevant ones to us. Because sometimes we talk about horses and stuff.
I mean.
I mean, they're.
I don't think we allow horses, so.
Oh, but you know, it's a long meeting and some of it is not relative to others either.
Interesting. Anything else, Chris?
The CML policy. Now, we're just, that was our very first meeting in months. And so we're just gearing up for, for school.
Justin?
Okay, quick Dr. Cog report. Um, RTB presented to Dr. Cog about fast tracks completion. And, um, they, you know, gave some difficult news about lack of funding. I don't think it's a surprise to most people on council here or everybody at council that, you know, finishing the end line is not as easy as that. Um, the Senate bill from twenty twenty-four seemed like it would be, although those funds are committed. RTD basically said that even with that Senate bill, I think it was, uh, two thirds, Senate Bill two thirty. Um, there's still, you know, major shortfalls of funding required with little insight as to where that would be. So the RTD, you know, presentation had some, to answer some tough questions, but I think it's just something that we should keep in mind when they're talking about the completion of the end line. It's that there, e- even with the Senate Bill, uh, two thirty is going to be a challenge to meet those, uh, those, uh, goals and objectives. So. And then there was also a presentation on, um, front range passenger rail from the governor's office. And they're very optimistic about meeting their, their goals for that one. But also I think there will be some challenges. So I don't want to say too much, but you know, I'm happy to share my notes with anybody on council, um, because I did, I did record them and summarize them. So. But yeah, not, not great views, but I don't think it's a surprise.
Another year with no money.
Yeah.
We're getting used to it.
Yeah, but they strangely are super optimistic about front range passenger rail, which they're having challenges, disagreements on the station, right? They want to build nice grade level stations, but the rail companies are not, they don't want that. So they're going to have to give some things up and I really honestly don't know if it's going to all come together. But it's not even coming to Thornton. So it's not on top of my mind. I don't really, I'll let you closely.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Uh, my high flood district did have a meeting on Thursday. There wasn't anything that directly impacted Thornton. There were a couple of projects surrounding the area, but nothing specific to Thornton. It was our last in-person meeting. Uh, they are meeting in November as well. We're at NLC. So we're going to do the whole thing online. So if you don't see me on that morning, on that Thursday, it's because I'm going to be on the call with my high flood district. All right. Any discussion items? All right, I got Roberta and Tony.
Um, I just wanted to make sure everything went okay with the group from Adams Twelve. The, for the presentation next week or next, yeah, I think it's next week.
Yes, we reached out to them and.
Okay.
Yeah. You did this.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just hadn't followed up with them. So we were talking and then I was like, I'll pass it to Joanne. All right. Thank you.
Tony?
Uh, for Commander Hopkins and Brett. We have had two days of Quebec being closed between one hundred and thirty-fourth and one hundred and thirty-six. And I've received phone calls from the neighborhood about bypass traffic that's going off of one hundred and thirty-fourth around That's going off of one hundred and thirty-fourth around to one hundred and thirty-six. Volume and speed.
I got the same calls.
Okay, and and if we could, I don't know if you've got some of those temporary road. Month you could put out there. We we did those in EVO classes. And what have you, but that and and on top of that, o- once we get. That recently, one hundred and fifty-second and Holly was opened. And today coming, we barricaded one hundred and fifty-second again. So one of our bypass pieces of. Traffic has now been barricaded. So I don't know why one fifty-second went back to being closed without access. Because that was a temporary relief off of the Quebec traffic on one hundred and thirty-sixth. So. Just give me idea how how long that will be closed at one fifty-second and what have you. That will be helpful.
We'll we'll do some internal discussion, brainstorming about mitigation and get an update out to the full council. Pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any else? Justin?
Yeah, so I was invited to participate in the Colorado Cooperation Conference. On September fifth through sixth in Pueblo. And if you're not aware, it's a. Organization that has convened civic, business, and community leaders across the state. They say to foster inclusive dialogue, strengthen relationships, and explore solutions to Colorado's toughest challenges. And so I I would be applying for a scholarship that would include the conference registration fees and hundred dollar travel. Funding. And so it looks like the only cost would be a one-night hotel stay in Pueblo. So just seeing the council would. Approve me to attend this conference. I was invited because I participate in the municipal leadership academy. So.
Say I got offered the same deal, but I can't go. So.
I figured, yeah, they are. It's really invite invitations to mayors and county commissioners, but they're also inviting. Recent graduates are are participants in leadership programs like the M L A. So Heidi Williams, former mayor of Thornton is the one who's kind of. Pushing it on the M L A participants. There's more slots left. So by applying today, I think I'll have a pretty good chance of getting.
I'll just tell him, give him mine, give you mine. It looked really interesting.
It does. You know, I, you know, I got the most important approval already from the thing.
Yes.
So now I just need the final authorization from the council.
Any objection? Anything else?
Sorry, I have one. What's a question for staff about the council update for next? Next week. I was looking at the look ahead and I didn't see any items scheduled for the council update.
You have your executive session to talk with your appointees about their evaluations.
Okay. Well, I I just would like to reserve maybe a five-minute window on there for discussion among the council about. Recreational. Facility fringe benefits that we talked about at the end of the council pay discussion. And there's been some offline. Back and forth between many people on here about some ideas and I would normally bring it up now, but. Couple of people who wanted to say something are here. So I just wanted to, it shouldn't take very long. Just wanted to make sure we get a little time slot on there for that.
Yeah, and I do believe, I think Joyce might have already snuck out. I do believe that we have some additional information that we can share in the context of that presentation as well.
And I guess final thing is. Before I stop on this is. We do we need like any kind of formal action to achieve those or can it be just. A kind of a direction given by consensus in a update?
Yes, so your your pay needs to be set by ordinance, but some of the other. Direction around support does does not need an ordinance.
Yeah, because this conversation is not about the pay. It's about like the brick, use of brick.
That's right. Those are those are administrative policies.
All right, thank you. That's all.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right, I just one reminder, I'm heading to Dallas tomorrow for the mayor's fellowship with the Hunt Institute. This is on education for mayors that. Do not run school districts on how to work with local school districts on career technical education and trade school groups. So. I'll report back when I get back. All right, have a good night.